We're on the record.
Thank you very much. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting can be accessed through the link available on parcitypany.net through WebEx. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. DeRich.
Here.
Councilman DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Frigieri. Ms. Hernandez.
Mr. Frigieri is here.
Okay, Ms. Hernandez.
Ms. Hernandez. Here.
Ms. Jane.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Mr. Mendel.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Von Aken.
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Ms. Favate, our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano, and our board attorney, Mr. Wenzel.
All right. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Uh, before we move on to the items on the agenda, there is a matter of the appointment of our, um, of our new planning board attorney.
I'm not going to take that as a bad omen.
John, you've cut off.
He, he's having bandwidth problems. John, if you can hear me, shut off your video. Yeah, this is IT. We're attempting to rectify the problem right now. He has low bandwidth. He's going to be leaving the meeting and trying to join again.
Hello, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
You're coming through well now.
Okay. Let's hope that holds up. I've got optimum, so I'll just leave it at that. All right. Um, there we go. Just getting my space set up again. I'm sorry for the delay. Before we continue with the, um, with the regular agenda, there is an item I just wanted to, um, show on the record. I'll be bringing this over to Mr. Perewick later, but, um, we have a, uh, we have a, uh, presentation for Mr. Perewick for his years of service on the planning board. Um, and I'll just go ahead and read it real, very quickly. In recognition of six years of dedicated service on the planning board for the township of Parsippany, we present this plaque to Vincent Perewick on February 25th, 2011, um, which is now February 8th, uh, but, um, still the sentiment exists, so I'll be happy to drop this over. Mr. Mealy, if you'd like to, um, let Vincent know that we'll be, uh, we'll be making sure he provided with this. I would really appreciate the time that he's provided.
I will do that, Mr. Chairman.
Very good.
Does 2021 instead of 2011?
Did I say two?
Yes.
Yes, 2021. It is correct on, on the plaque. Grateful for that. Okay, with that said, um, our regular agenda, we have Target Corporation, application number 20:528.
Chairman, don't we have to take care of the attorney first?
Yes, always take care of your attorney first.
I'm sorry, I got mixed up in my agenda points. Uh, yes, we have the, uh, appointment of a new attorney. Thank you, Mr. Mendel, for putting me back on track. So were there any members of the board that had any questions about Mr. Wenzel or his, uh, um, uh, his experience?
I, I would love just a brief overview.
I second that.
Mr. Wenzel, would you mind presenting yourself, uh, to the board?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, uh, I have, uh, over 20 years of experience, uh, in local government field and land use. I am currently the planning board attorney and have been the planning board attorney in Woodland Park in Passaic County for the past 10 years. I've been the planning board attorney in Perth Amboy for the past five years. I've represented, uh, various applicants before planning boards throughout Essex, Passaic, Middlesex, Morris, Union County, uh, various, uh, types of, uh, matters, residential, commercial, and redevelopment applications. It's a pleasure to be here, uh, for the Parsippany Planning Board. I know it's a very busy board. I know you have a lot going on. Uh, you have, uh, multiple, uh, issues that are, uh, of pressing nature, and, uh, I'm more than willing to spend, uh, my time to help you succeed. And, uh, Nora has my information. Should any of the planning board members which wish to contact me and ask me any further questions or have any further comments or, or, uh, any other type of conversation about, uh, any matters, I'd be more than happy to talk to you offline at that time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, um, I don't believe a motion is required in order to, uh, oh, you're saying yes, it is required? Okay, I will, uh, ask for the board to, uh, make a motion to accept Mr. Wenzel as our new board attorney.
So move Frigieri.
Second, Dinsmore.
Very good. Nora, would you please take a vote?
Mr. DeRich.
Mr. DeRich.
Mr. DePiro.
Mr. DePiro.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yeah.
Mr. Frigieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Ms. Hernandez. Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Napolitano.
Yes.
And Chairman Von Aken.
Yes. Okay. Now we're returned to the agenda for today, and we have first up, uh, application number 20:528, Target Corporation. Uh, is the attorney for the applicant present?
Yes, hi. Good evening. Greg Adelman here on behalf of Target Corporation.
Go ahead, Mr. Adelman.
Thank you. As a preliminary matter, we're having technical difficulties getting Target's Development Manager, Aaron Hemquist, online. I don't know if Nora can assist in any way.
Um, dude, I don't have his information. Um, I mean, if, if we, someone can get in touch with him and ask him to go through the Parsippany website?
I think he just logged on.
Okay, great.
I see him. Thank you, Nora.
Excellent.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Good evening. Again, Greg Adelman here on behalf of Target Corporation. Um, I'm joined this evening by our project engineer, engineer, Tony Diggan, uh, project planner, Paul Ricci, and Aaron Hemquist, who is Target's Development Manager. Um, we're here this evening for a minor site plan with a couple of C variances, uh, with respect to some reconfiguration of the parking lot at the Target Corporation at the Troy Hill Shopping Center to permit drive-up, uh, and drop-off, uh, configuration that Target is doing throughout the country. Um, I have, uh, some short testimony to be, uh, given by Mr. Diggan as well as from Mr. Ricci. Uh, if the board's pleasure, I could have them both sworn at this time, and maybe we should have Mr. Hemquist sworn as well in the event that you have any questions with respect to Target's operations.
That'll be fine, and then once, uh, once they've been sworn in, we'll go through the waivers with Ms. Favate.
Sure.
Okay, um, the gentlemen, um, that were identified by counsel, okay, uh, Hemquist and Diggan, and who was the third one?
Ricci.
Ricci. Oh, I see now. Okay. Uh, individually, if you could respond back for the clarity of the record with your name and identify who you are and then state yes, hopefully to this question. Do you swear or affirm tell truth for this planning board tonight in this virtual format?
I do. This is Tony Diggan with Kimley Horn, the project engineer.
I do. This is Paul Ricky with Ricky Planning, professional planner for the application.
And Aaron.
Okay.
Can you, did you hear me? I do. Aaron Hemquist for Target.
Thank you, sirs. Okay. Chairman, the witnesses have been sworn in. Should counsel wish to proceed, call witnesses.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Favate, would you please go through the waivers for this application?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Um, the applicant's waiver, given the minor nature of the application, it's essentially, um, restriping some parking spaces and, uh, so many of the checklist items typically required for, you know, items that, that involve construction were asked to be withdrawn from. So we, we rejected those waivers. Um, I believe we only asked additional information, uh, on whether there are any protective covenants or deed restrictions on the, we asked for that in testimony. Um, other than that, we did recommend the waivers sought, and they've been outlined in the memo that we submitted to the planning board.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, any questions from the board members regarding the waivers? All right, hearing none, I'll accept the motion to accept the waivers as stated.
So move Mendel. Second, Dinsmore.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Let the record show none. Thank you very much. Waivers are accepted. Please continue.
Thank you very much and appreciate that from the board. At this time, I'd like to have Mr. Diggan testify, and I don't know if, Tony, are you unmuted?
Uh, yes, yes, I am. I think so. Can you hear me?
Yes, that's good. Thank you very much. Tony, just quickly, could you please state your qualifications for the board?
Sure. My name is Tony Diggan, D-I-G-G-A-N. I'm employed by Kimley Horn at 902 Carnegie Center Boulevard, Prince, New Jersey, 08540. I oversee land development, site civil engineering for Kimley Horn in New Jersey. Uh, I've been involved in, uh, that regard for over 20 years. I have a professional engineering license, um, that is valid, current, and in good standing, and appeared, uh, throughout the state before numerous boards as an expert in civil engineering, and I've appeared before this board previously.
Based on that, I'd ask the board to accept Mr. Diggan as an expert in civil engineering.
Do any of the board members have any questions for this witness regarding their qualifications? All right, hearing none, uh, we'll consider this witness acceptable. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Diggan, do you have the ability to call up what we've, uh, submitted and are marking as Target Exhibit 1?
I don't believe I do. Uh, my share button is actually grayed out.
Nora, is there any way to enable him to share as a panelist?
Standby. He's now a presenter.
Great.
Thank you very much.
So, Tony, if you can, in order to make this as quick as possible, please walk us through what we've now marked as Exhibit Target 1, which was submitted with the application.
If I may, uh, I was going to take a step back and show the aerial. Uh, this is essentially the same aerial that's included on our cover sheet, C00, to orient the board. Hearing no objections, I'll continue. Uh, generally speaking, uh, the Troy Hills Shopping Center is sandwiched between Route 46 on its, uh, northern border and Route 80 on the southern border. Uh, there are, uh, right-in, right-out driveway on Route 46. There's also an ingress-only driveway. There is project access as well on, uh, South Beverwick Road. Uh, Target is in this location right here, the center of the site. Uh, immediately west is LA Fitness, I believe, and to its, uh, east are a number of junior, uh, retail stores. I believe immediately adjacent is Chipotle. Uh, there are outpads, uh, in the parking field to the north, uh, Panera Northwest, McDonald's, uh, kind of in the center of the site. Uh, as Mr. Adelman pointed out, this, the subject of this, this application is to seek minor site plan approval for the sighting of a drive-up, um, locations, which would basically convert eight existing driving, or eight existing parking spaces to six drive-up spaces with a, uh, 13-foot-tall directional beacon sign. Uh, any questions on existing conditions? Just let me point out real quick, though, that this is on Block 729, Lot 7. Uh, address is 1123 Route 46, and the parcel is about 19.3 acres. It is in the B1 Highway Commercial District we're, we're in. Uh, the operation is permitted use. Uh, all that being said, any, uh, questions on the existing condition? Uh, one other thing I can point out is there are 1,040 parking spaces, uh, which were approved as part of a prior application. Again, this is going to take eight spaces, um, reduce those to six parking spaces, thereby, uh, the parking count would go, drop to 1,038. So now I'm going to move on to our sheet, C100. Um, so, and this exhibit, uh, north is actually planned south, if you will. So Route 46 is along the, uh, bottom of the sheet here. The location, uh, was chosen for the, the drive-up, uh, parking spaces is immediately, um, west, if you will. I know it looks east, planned east here on this, um, exhibit, but it's immediately west, if you will, of the existing crosswalk. This location was chosen because it did not interrupt existing ADA parking. Uh, it is near the front of the store where the associates would, um, circulate to deliver parcels for items purchased, uh, through the drive-up app. Um, there's also, uh, landscaping is not interrupted here. The grading and drainage patterns would remain as, as they were before. Um, I, just a brief explanation of the drive-up app. Basically, you can order items online from the, the drive-up app. Uh, the store receives that order and then gives you an arrival window, so they do control, uh, amount of, um, trips coming in as part of that drive-up program. The average order fulfillment time is around two minutes. So while there is a reduction in the number of parking spaces, what you have here is actually a, a more efficient use of these spaces in that, if a person were to park and shop, we're typically looking at a 20 to 30-minute, um, time in that parking space, or even if they were to use the, um, the, uh, online order pickup, that's still a, uh, round trip or, or a, a time in that space of four to six minutes, based on the average, um, pickup order. Again, they are, let me, uh, go to sheet C200. This is, yeah, this was submitted along with the minor site plan application. Again, there will be a single, uh, drive-up beacon sign. Uh, I'll, I'll get to that in a second. I'll show you a little more detail on that. Right now, I want to show you the orientation of the spaces, uh, each of the, the widths of the, of the, uh, uh, drive-up stalls, if you will, are nine foot wide with a four-and-a-half-foot circulation aisle in between those. Uh, in, in this exhibit, you can see that the, um, access to these spaces is provided from the contiguous drive aisles. Let me take a step back here to see 100. I know there was a question, uh, from engineering, whether we consider making these all one-way. Uh, the issue we found early on, I think, at this point, we're up to about 1,700 stores, maybe a little bit more than that, where this has been deployed, so it's very data-driven. Not random selections by any means, but we maintained, uh, two-direction flow-throughs that we had access from both contiguous drive aisles. Let me go to the beacon sign itself. Again, the way we typically view these, these are directional signs, uh, in that they orient folks who have made a, a purchase to these, the stall location, so they're not driving around the, um, parking field. Uh, the signage is about 16, is 16 square feet per, uh, drive-up sign. It has a one-foot-wide width, if you will, with the signage being this top four feet for all four sides. Uh, these are, uh, all self-contained. There's no communications connections required, uh, through the pavement, so basically, um, no interruption to pavement whatsoever. And hours of operation are in lockstep with the store. In our case here, um, Sunday through Saturday is, um, 8:00 AM to, to 10:00 PM. That's all I have. If there are specific questions about the, um, operational aspects of the app or the, the parking field, I can field those now. Oh, one other thing, uh, the engineer asked if any of these stalls presently have, uh, cart returns, and in fact, there are cart returns in the second set of, um, existing spaces. Those cart returns would be moved, uh, approximately six stalls to the south in this area here, to not interfere with the drive-up. So that's all I have about the existing proposed condition. If there are specific questions, I can take those at this time.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Canjiano, did you have any further questions for this witness?
Yeah, um, just, just to follow up on, on a couple of things. The, uh, operation and staffing, how does the, uh, you know, the deliveries work and what, can you just explain that a little bit?
Sure. Uh, so basically, you order on the, the drive-up app on your phone. Uh, the order is received, uh, customer service, they pick the order, they respond back to your app, giving you a, um, a time to arrive. Uh, when you arrive at the store, let's assume, sake of argument, you come in this, this ingress drive right here. As you got, as you get closer to the store, there's a geocat, or a geofence, rather, that alerts Target, uh, the Target associate responsible for that delivery to your car, that you've arrived. So then you look for the drive-up sign, the beacon sign, if you will. You circulate to that location, um, and a Target employee comes out the front of the store, goes to the, to the, uh, circulation aisle and scans your app, uh, to basically complete the, the point-of-sale, if you will, and then loads that item into your car.
All right, thank you. Have, have you, and what, you said 1,700 stores you put this in. That's, that's, that's a nice, uh, uh, some good data there. Have you found any safety issues with that configuration with the employees, you know, crossing the road there, um, across the main drive aisle?
That's a great question. Uh, we have not, and we've seen, um, through numerous municipalities, uh, sometimes there are requests to add additional crosswalks, but the way I guess I would frame this is that we have an associate who knows that they're delivering a package to a car that's going to be waiting at the beacon. Um, say, for example, my wife who has four kids in tow with the, with the phone, and we, um, understand that our associate is far more in tune with what's going on around the, the store, if you will. Um, so we've not seen issues with the, the associate, um, delivering across those drive aisles.
And just one more question on parking. I kind of defer to the variance and, and account, maybe, maybe to, uh, the planner, um, Ms. Favate, but, um, it looks like, like you said, there's existing eight parking stalls being removed and being replaced with this drive-up configuration. And if I understood you correctly, you're, you're saying that those act as six parking or six, uh, uh, you know, staging stalls? I mean, to me, it looks more like it would react as three locations, um, so that you wouldn't have to stack up behind somebody. Just, if you could just explain that a little bit more, and again, I defer to the board on their opinion if that's six or three spaces or some other number, uh, but I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, so i- in general, when you, you, when they've been driving in, they basically pull to the head of the stall, which is, is all the way through, if you will. Um, in addition, basically, a- as I outlined before, the store controls the arrival rate, and the, um, the stacking or the, the unavailability of a, of a stall has not been an issue.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Favate, any, any questions for the, uh, for the witness?
Yeah, just the only thing I had is confirmation. So two of the spaces that are there now are currently occupied with cart return. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, so basically, four spaces, uh, no, I'm sorry, six spaces currently are actually being used for parking. Uh, and you're relocating the cart return to basically take up another two spaces where, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I had, yeah, I, th- this is actually in use, uh, at the Target in East Hanover on Route 10, if anybody's been there recently. Um, so it's, it's basically as, as is shown here. They just, they just pull right through Andrew, um, and I've, I've, too stacked, seem to be okay.
So, Ms. Favate, do you?
Chairman.
No. So do you, uh, agree that, uh, these, uh, pull-throughs represent two spots each for a total of six spots?
Yeah, I agree with that. That, that.
Do any of the board members have questions for the witness?
Uh, Mr. Frigieri.
Go ahead, Mr. Frigieri.
Uh, I was unable to, uh, to determine, um, the, the signage part, the ba, what, the, the material that the base is made out of is quite clear. That's not going anywhere. Um, what, what is the material that the sign itself is made out of, and how, what are the, I guess there's some type of standards for wind and things of that sort, and then, of course, I would apply the same question to the solar panel, um, so that we don't, we don't have these things snapping off or flipping off and cartwheeling across, uh, I'm sure you don't want that either. So just, if you can, uh, help us understand that, I appreciate it.
Sure. Uh, I think some, well, sometimes the, the material assigned can vary, but I can tell you that we, there are two, um, standard wind load designs, 120 mile per hour, 180 mile per hour. Um, so they're designed to resist, uh, that wind load? That answer the question?
Yeah, yes. Uh, and regarding the support for the solar panel itself, what, what is, what is the load for that?
Uh, that would also be the entirety of the, of the, um, the complete directional sign would be for that wind load.
It would, okay. Nice, thank you.
I have a question.
Who was that?
Nick Nepal Town.
Go ahead, Nick.
Mr. Diggan, the the other stores use stop signs on opposite ends of the parking spots?
Are you are you referring to the like a temporary?
Uh, if you could look at the crosswalk and then you box out your new spots, are there stop signs on opposite ends so the associates can run across and not on? Be right back and hit. Or you guys don't use those?
We had, well, we do have temporary drive up signs. I'm not sure if that's if you had seen more of those at another store. Are you talking about placement of of stop signs in this area?
Uh, no, move your cursor up. There.
On the drive aisle?
Yeah.
No. No.
Do you think you could elaborate more on Mr. Nepal Town's question regarding to whether you feel that safety is an issue?
Yeah, so. To answer the question specifically, though, no, we don't propose stop signs here, but the fact of the matter is, there are there are signs throughout. Shopping center for yielding to pedestrians and crosswalks, but any any shopper, anywhere in the center for that matter, for any other store, when they walk out this this. At the end of this drive out, perpendicular drive out to go to the store, it's basically facing the same condition. And the expectation is along the storefront that you should be anticipating you're going to encounter pedestrians. So if we were to do that here arguably, sorry, right here. Really, we're saying then we would have to add, you know, add that same condition everywhere else. That makes sense.
And the the crosswalk is lined up with the front door of Target, or are those spaces lined up with the front door?
So the crosswalk is, I believe, let me go to the. The area here, I believe the crosswalk is lined up. With that entrance. There with me here. Yes, this this one had a remodel. So that crosswalk is, well, slightly offset, but it's lined up with the entrance over here, and these spaces would be these spaces here. So right, very approximate to the front of the store.
And the other stores don't have a double crosswalk for those spaces?
No, there's there's not a separate crosswalk to the drive up.
Okay.
Any other board members with questions?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Dahish.
Yeah, so real quick, the I missed that. How many parking spaces we're losing? Two or four?
So presently, in that that eight stall designated area, if you will, I'm going to pan here a little bit. So it's these eight stalls here, one, two, three, four, this box, if you will. This block of parking spaces. So presently, the second stall in does have a cart return. So that cart return is going to be slid down beyond this. Our color bar. In essence, you'll be losing two spots because the eight spaces here will reduce to six stalls overall. So you're still losing two stalls.
All right, so I basically wanted to confirm, we are not losing any ADA parking spot, right? I mean, we are not, right?
Yeah, no, the the reason it's cited in this location is to avoid modifications to the ADA spaces that have already been cited.
Now, the I know you, we have installed similar system at seventeen hundred stores, and you have a lot of data probably there. So. I do understand that now it's the. The traffic coming in at these parts only stays there for two to three minutes, because that's how that's how I think based on the data you orders are being fulfilled. That also means that the traffic has increased in that area, right? If there are six spots, if every shopper takes twenty to thirty minutes, you're talking about eight to ten shoppers going in and out within an hour. But with with three to two to three or four minutes, you're talking about twenty, thirty, or maybe forty cars coming in in an hour. Assuming you have a lot of orders coming in.
Right.
But that really means that traffic has increased in this area a little bit. Do you have any data around it showing any of that kind of any of that pattern?
Yes.
Data, yeah.
Yes, yes, we do. No, that's I understand where you're. I arrived at that. Basically, the typically the peak in daily trips to these is. It's around forty, forty trips per day. And again, their their arrival rates are managed by the Target store employees.
Okay, but traffic basically is increased, but as basically I'm going back to Nick's question where the the. The pedestrians in this just outside the the store. I feel like, you know, there's a little bit of safety issue there, and I think stop sign would be a good addition from a safety for the pedestrian's perspective. Both sides of the that crosswalk.
Are the existing crosswalk?
Yeah.
Let me just see what we got for space there. Yeah, so we could put a. You could either do the yield for pedestrians and crosswalk, or if you feel it's warranted, we could put a stop sign on the other side.
Yeah, that would that would be very, very good, because like I said, I think. Losing four spots or five spots, that that would be fine, because like you said, I think efficiency will be higher, but then traffic will be higher as well. And I think we just want to make sure that everybody is safe out there. If you could consider that, that would be nice.
Okay, we'll work with Mr. Cagiano to. Get some additional traffic control in.
Wonderful. And one last question. So on these drive ups, right? Do you stack up two cars any point of time, or is always considered one car only, the way the store controls the traffic?
There will be times where two cars are there for for brief time.
Okay.
That is the intent. They're supposed to function as as two spaces.
All right. And again, just from the data you might have had for seventeen hundred stores. When you're stacking up six cars in this type of thing, right, are you finding any traffic congestion issues and that kind of thing, or have you seen anything of that kind?
No, we have seen, obviously during the pandemic, contactless retail is definitely grown. We have seen more demand, so some of these stores, we've had, we started out with four spaces, one beacon sign, and. For the stores that haven't been done yet, we're suggesting six, six bases be the be the norm for the stores going forward. A lot of that was driven by the by the pandemic, though.
Okay, all right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Dahish. Any other board members with a question?
Just just my own thought here. I I I certainly appreciate the the safety concerns being raised, but I would be concerned also about. Ensuring we have an adequate flow of traffic. And sometimes a stop sign. In an area where there's clear understanding about respecting rights of travel could could make things. Excessively difficult, but I I would be comfortable with Mr. Cagiano providing his his opinion there and. And working with with the applicant on that.
Thank you.
We'll look at that and we'll see what's the most appropriate type of signage or indication there of some kind of yield to pedestrian signage or or other. We'll work with the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Cagiano. All right. Do you have another witness then?
Yes, I do. I'd like to have Mr. Hemquist testify briefly. And Aaron, are you unmuted now?
I am. Good afternoon or good evening.
Great, thank you, Aaron. And if you could briefly teleport your position and involvement with respect to this Target store?
Sure, I am a senior development manager for Target Real Estate. I've been with Target. For just over ten years, and I'm a registered engineer in the state of Minnesota for the last twenty years. I'm I I cover existing stores in our northeast market.
Okay, and Aaron, I believe there was a question from the planner with respect to whether this property is subject to any restrictions or covenants. Can you speak to that?
We, I would say that we we lease this site from Federal Realty, and so we are, we have a, we have a lease with them and. Are required to get their approval for anything we do on this site, so I. Other than what they've they've told us in our lease, I'm not aware of any the additional restrictions.
Okay, and and are you aware whether Federals approved what you're proposing to do this evening?
They have, yes.
Great.
And Mr. Edelman, very quick, is Mr. Hemquist being presented as a fact witness or as a, what what are the credentials he's presenting as?
Just as a fact witness.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Hemquist, there was some testimony and some questions just a few minutes ago with Mr. Diggan regarding pedestrian safety. And if you could please teleport what efforts Target is doing with respect to increasing and ensuring pedestrian safety across its stores throughout the nation?
Sure, as you can imagine, our this this service has increased considerably over the last year, and so we've we've taken the safety of our team members and our guests. Seriously, so we've, while we haven't seen any any extraordinary amounts of accidents or incidents, we've. Taken a proactive approach to add additional striping and signage to to make sure these these applications are are. As safe as they can be. So with regards to adding striping and signage, we are absolutely open to doing that. We'll obviously have to work with federal because they are the landlord here, but we're happy to to and glad to take a look at that. And implement what what something that makes sense.
Great, thank you. I don't have anything further for Mr. Hemquist. John, you're on mute.
Muted, John.
Thank you. Any board members with questions for the witness?
Yeah, this is Mandel.
Go ahead, Steve.
Not so much a question. If you go back to the previous drawing, which showed the driveway. Yep. Since I happen to frequent this shopping center, there are stop signs before the crosswalks. Let's see, that would be heading. We're looking south, a third of south, there are a couple of crosswalks that do have stop signs as you're driving. So you may want to consider a stop sign at that crosswalk. And that's a later addition. This picture is like twenty nineteen. I think those stop signs were put in last year, actually. And just as a point of information, it's no longer LA Fitness, it's something else. And the CVS is long gone. You know, so like the stop sign would be. Just coming towards us before the the target balls.
So so you'd like to see that, Mr. Mandel, correct?
Yeah, I think that is helpful, because, you know, I I've been in there as a pedestrian too, and. Those stop signs have stopped, you know, the the people leaving the gym tend to be in a haste, and they're the ones who seem to be speeding through there.
Okay. Okay. Any other board members with questions? Okay, and Mr. Cagiano, did you have any other questions? Ms. Fivate, any other questions?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Edelman, any other witnesses?
One more witness, Paul Ricky. Paul, are you unmuted?
Yes, I am.
Great, thank you. And Paul, if you could very briefly tell the board about your qualifications as a planner?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since the year two thousand. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners since nineteen ninety nine. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning, which I received from Rutgers University in nineteen ninety seven. I I currently operate as Ricky Planning. I'm a consultant to to five communities. I testify in front of boards regularly, upwards of two hundred boards throughout the state. I I have testified. From time to time in Park Sipper as well.
Right, and based on Mr. Ricky's qualifications, I'd ask that the board accept him as an expert in planning?
Do any of the members of the board have questions about Mr. Ricky's qualifications? Hearing none, Mr. Ricky is acceptable as a planning witness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ricky, did you review the application before this evening with respect to the variances that have been requested?
I did.
And if you could please briefly go through both the variances and provide the proofs, as well as the testimony on the negative criteria with respect to the relief request?
Sure, and I'll try to be, I'll try not to be repetitive. We're seeking two variances. One is for the area of the sign. You permit directional signs to be four square feet, where we are proposing sixteen square feet. Excuse me. We're also seeking the the parking variance to allow a two-space reduction. One thousand and forty spaces exist today, one thousand and thirty-eight spaces are proposed, and there is an existing per-year ordinance requirement of. Of one thousand two hundred and seventy-five spaces. We will be seeking the the variance relief, what we commonly refer as the the C two criteria, where we can show that a purpose of the municipal land use law will be advanced. And the variances can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good or zone plan. Essentially, when the we can demonstrate the benefits of the deviations outweigh the detriments, the board could choose or to vote favorably for an application. Such as this. I I hope the board can recognize that this application is somewhat minor. I would classify it somewhat minor in nature. Here, the applicant is proposing a thirteen foot tall beacon sign within essentially a nineteen acre site. You can see that the site. Has numerous signs located throughout it. Clearly, there's a need for this sign, there's a need for this sign to. There's a need for this sign to to identify and to delineate the newly proposed drive up service. And I think also it's clear that there's a there's a need. For towns to to work with businesses to to allow them to modernize themselves and keep up with customer demands and needs. And I and I did review your two thousand master plan. This is this point is is particularly on point with your master plan, where one of your goals is to preserve. And enhance the township's retail, commercial, corporate research, and professional office areas. By implementing land use strategies that respond to moderate market and real estate trends, so. We advance your master plan. Also. It's clear that if this is being installed in seventeen hundred stores or has been installed in seventeen hundred stores throughout the nation, there is a clear. Need for this type of facility. So the the positives are are many. And the the negatives are minor. We saw the we saw the information provided by by Mr. Diggan. I think it's clear that that monument side is not overly destructive or visually obtrusive. It's designed to match the architecture of the existing building, the red. It doesn't advertise Target in any way. It's merely an identification sign. Regarding the parking variance, the proposed two-space reduction in parking is clearly necessary to to effectuate this use. Again, I do believe it's it's somewhat de minimis in nature in this context, but we heard the testimony from Mr. Diggan. That explained that despite the loss in parking, the fact that the parking or the fact that customers are able. To enter and leave the site in a more expeditious manner, that the the parking demand won't actually be reduced. And that what I mean by that is that because a customer can get in and off the site quicker. This the the loss of parking really feel like a loss in parking, and for that, there will be no negative impacts associated with reducing. The number of parkings, number of parking spaces, excuse me. For the reasons that I mentioned, this advances your master plan, provides a safety for individuals trying to find this location. So I believe this clearly advances purpose A of the municipal land use law as it promotes the general welfare. Regarding the negative criteria, we show that the variances can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good, namely surrounding property owners. Here, the improvements are essentially located in a nineteen acre tract. I believe that the sign package is consistent with the character of the area. Uh, I believe that the sign package, uh, is consistent with the character of the area. Um, the designs provide a clear and safe message on an attractively designed medium. And that, we also mentioned that parking, uh, while the spaces are being reduced functionally, there will be no true loss in parking spaces as a result of the improved efficiencies on site. Um, regarding the intent and purpose of your zone plan, um, as the sign has been designed, uh, to promote the general welfare and public safety, uh, this will not result in a substantial, uh, detriment to your zone plan as well. Uh, for these reasons, I believe this is, is a very good application, uh, and one that meets the statutory criteria, uh, for bulk variance relief.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ricky. I don't, I don't have any further questions for Mr. Ricky.
Ms. Favate, any questions for Mr. Ricky?
None for me.
Uh, Mr. Cagiano? Any board members with questions? All right, um, Mr. Ricky, just one, one last question for me. Uh, the, the height of the sign is, is Target use any other heights of signs that might be a little bit shorter, um, rather than the, uh, the proposed height on this sign?
I, I've been involved, um, is it, Mr. Chairman? I've been involved with only a, a few of these applications. Um, I've seen 12 to 14 feet is the general trend. I'm not sure exactly why this sign was sized that at 13 feet, but it's only one foot wide. Um, it's, it's, uh, it has to be a certain height to be, to be visible clearly. Um, and maybe Mr. Diggan can touch upon that from the engine drive. So it needs to stand above and not be blocked by cars. Have visibility, otherwise it doesn't serve its, its function. But this is the size, the general size that, that I've seen as part of the applications that, that I've partied in.
Mr. Diggan, would you mind, uh, elaborating also on that question?
Sure. Yeah, so the, typically, the, um, this, this sign is approximately a foot taller than our, our, uh, normal sign, if you will. Uh, it's due to the fact that we're not mounting it into the parking lot itself. Um, so the way we look at it though is, is in order to be able to see over, you know, a cargo van or somebody's work vehicle happens to be swinging by, it's, it's advantageous to have these sit up uh, at least 10 feet, uh, so you're able to see it from a distance.
And 10 feet, 10 feet makes a lot of sense to me. This is, uh, 13 feet plus one additional foot for the solar.
Right. But that, that, uh, it, it starts basically, your signage or your lettering starts at the, um, right around the eight-foot mark. So that four foot above it is where you get to the 12. And that's, it, it basically the part that's, uh, internally illuminated is that, that lettering, if you will. So that if we could keep that up at that, uh, eight-foot mark, that's, that's very advantageous for people to see it in the parking field where there are uh, larger vehicles or SUVs parked adjacent to it.
All right. Uh, Mr. Cagiano, do you agree with that testimony?
I mean, you, you gotta be able to see the sign above the vehicle and he points out, I'm just looking at your numbers though. You have three-foot base and then five-foot 10, so it's closer to nine feet above, uh, the vehicle it starts. But, um, I mean, it makes sense. It's like, it's, the, the footprint of the sign is, is very nominal. It's one foot wide. Um, I, I personally don't have, uh, it seems to make sense to me.
Ms. Favate, uh, we don't feel like this would be any kind of, uh, a, a major distraction for the, uh, for the drivers or, or, or for the surrounding area?
No, I think it, given the narrowness of the sign, it is, is fairly unobtrusive. It gets the job done. And again, just from personal experience, I've kind of, I've seen it in action. Um, it, it's, you know, the size it needs to be to, you know, to direct the drivers, but really no more.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Edelman, do you have any other witnesses to present?
No, I do not this evening. I just moved for admission of the exhibits that Mr. Diggan has presented this evening.
Uh, yes, I believe presented the Google Maps and I don't think we, uh, assigned that.
Uh, I, I would just say that that was for edification purposes, although the street map may, uh, may prove valuable. We can make that exhibit target two.
Okay. Understood. All right. At this point, I would like to make, um, the meeting open to the general public for the purpose of asking questions of any of the witnesses. Uh, so Mr. Hafker, if you could help us out with that?
There are no hands raised.
No hands raised at this time?
Correct.
Okay. Um.
I have one more question. It's Mission Napolitano.
Go ahead, Mr. Napolitano.
Uh, Target has so much advertising. Do you guys have a video you could share of this actually in action? Anybody?
I, I, I don't know if we have one readily available.
Is there one on YouTube?
Yeah, I was gonna say, does, Aaron, are you still with us?
I am, and I unfortunately, I don't have a, a, a video.
It, is there one that you could refer the board to so that they could see it?
Um, I, I could, I would have, I would have to look. I, I don't know of anyone in, in particular that would, um, depict it, but I, I can probably, I could probably forward one.
Right, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Dahish.
Uh, can you go back to the, uh, previous drawing where the parking spots were shown?
Uh, you want?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, can you zoom into this a little bit? And then, yep. Yeah, so one thing I observed is the, the, the direction of flow. I'm assuming this is how it's going to be, right? So, um, what I'm noticing is, uh, look at the ADA parking spots. Right behind those, there's a crosswalk coming out. And if you look at the drive-ups, in a worst-case scenario, there could be four cars coming out, assuming fours, orders are filled, four cars coming out towards the ADA parking. Imagine, you know, somebody, you know, in that ADA situation trying to back up their car, plus the crosswalk. I think that's, that's a little bit of a safety or hazardous situation there. Um, I think we need to look at that, that and see what we can do there. I mean, at the minute, I would suggest we, we reverse the traffic flow, right? Two, two could go out the other way and one could come out this way.
So while we're confident that would, that would operate fine, we're, we're willing to look at reversing the, uh, directionality of two of those, basically flipping the flow.
Yeah, I'm at the minimum, right? If there's anything else we can think of, I think, if somebody has a suggestion, we can do that. But I, I think we should definitely keep that in mind, yeah.
The, the only thing other that I think we could consider is, is moving it over one, one set of aisles. Um, do you have an opinion on that, Mr. Dahish?
And that would be awesome. If we can, the whole thing could be on the one, yeah, on the right-hand side, yeah.
Um, how, how does, how does the applicant feel about that, that recommendation?
So the, the issue with, with setting it, uh, let's call it Plan East, if you will, to the right here, is that there's a light station there and a, a landscape island. Uh, we like to keep clean sightlines, so to the front of the store where the associate's coming from. Um, and the further away you get from the store, the more that uh, delivery time is increased due to, um, circulation by the associate from the storefront, which is ostensibly right here.
Hmm.
Yeah, there would be idea if we could do that, shift it, um, if, if that's not an option, then at least, um, switch the flow, so we can minimize that or optimize that flow towards the ADA parking.
Sure. That's a good recommendation, Mr. Dahish. Uh, uh, is that Mr. Uh?
It's, it's Mr. Fratieri.
Okay, go ahead, Bruce.
Um, uh, I'll ask the, uh, the representatives, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, if we shift, uh, this, uh, the, the, this pickup area, uh, further, I, to the west, I think, if I'm looking at it properly, uh, to screen right, as it were. Um, we are making the employees walk further without the crosswalk to bring the product out. Um, if I'm reading that incorrectly, um, you know, please correct me, but that's what I think would happen if we shifted. So please clarify.
That, that's correct. So, um, again, so this, this drawing, uh, Plan South is actually North, uh, so that would be, uh, West is to your right. So the further, uh, we move this to Plan Right, if you will, or West, yes, it would increase, uh, travel time for the associate.
And exposure to traffic, which is kind of what I'm getting at.
Yeah, but if there is a risk to somebody, right? I mean, right now, this is creating a risk for the folks in the ADA parking, right?
Uh, that's correct. And often what you'll see is that the crosswalks are placed, uh, adjacent to the ADA parking, uh, to accommodate those needs.
So that. This is, this is Aaron Hemquist again with, with Target. I, I will say that we have this condition, uh, at a lot of locations, um, just because of the proximity to, to the door. I think maybe this, this crosswalk makes it look a little bit tighter than it, than it really is, but, uh, we haven't seen any, any additional, uh, conflicts when it comes to ADA and the drive-up. Um, and I, and I would hesitate to push it over a row just because I think you're, uh, if you can keep the crosswalks bubbled up together, I think that, um, in, in one location, that is, is one less consideration for, um, cross-traffic to have to deal with.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
So just to close on that, so are we at least doing the flow switch at least, or?
I believe that is a request we can make, uh, on the motion.
Okay.
Yes, to confirm, we're amenable to reversing the flow.
And to the. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna ask our, uh, engineer, Mr. Cagiano, to, uh, consult with you on what's the best way to have calm but continuous traffic as appropriate. I'm assuming the, the applicant has no problem working with Mr. Cagiano to, to come up with the, the most appropriate solution.
That, that's correct. No objection to that.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah, I was just making a proposal there, but yeah, most optimal solution would be whatever it is. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, do any of the board members wish to make any comments on this application? Okay, uh, in that case, I'll accept the motion, uh, from any of the board members.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
A motion to approve the application number 20:528, Target Corporation, 1123 Route 46, Block 729, Lot 7, minor site plan with seat variance and the conditions just proposed.
Second.
Do you have a second?
A second. Hernandez.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Would you please call the roll?
Dede?
Yes.
Dee Piero?
Yes.
Dindmore?
Yes.
Ferjiri?
Yes.
Hernandez? Yes. Dan?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Von Aiken?
Yes. Okay.
Great.
Application is approved.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for your time this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
Take care.
All right. Uh, our next application is for, uh, Lidl US Operations, application number 20:524. Um, is Lidl present?
Uh, yes. Good evening, Chairman John Wuchescola, on behalf of Lidl US Operations LLC. Uh, it's our pleasure to be back before the board this evening. Um, this is a continuation with respect to our application. Uh, we are seeking site plan approval with bulk variances and a major soil movement permit, uh, really to permit the redevelopment of the existing Food Town supermarket and restaurant site, uh, which is located at 435 North Beverwick Road. Uh, and we are proposing the development of a new Lidl grocery store. Uh, the proposed use is a permitted use in the B3 Zone District, uh, which is the zone that the property is located in. Uh, just to remind and refresh everyone on the board, uh, our first hearing with respect to this application, uh, was held December 7th, 2020. Uh, at that time, you heard detailed company and operations testimony from Matthew Sandalands. Uh, he's the real estate manager for Lidl. Uh, you also heard from our project engineer, Ben Crowder. Uh, Mr. Crowder provided detailed testimony, uh, regarding existing site conditions, uh, and the proposed project with its overall site enhancements. Uh, and those enhancements include, uh, significant reductions in impervious coverage, uh, significant increases in landscaping and buffering, uh, better site circulation, uh, drainage improvements over the existing conditions, uh, that are at the site, uh, today. Um, better site circulation, uh, better and more efficient site lighting, energy-efficient lighting throughout the lot, uh, providing continued cross-access to volunteer, uh, park, uh, by way of cross-access easements is necessary. And really just the overall improvement to the aesthetics of this commercially zoned property with a new modern grocery store. Uh, you also heard the testimony of our traffic engineer, Jared Dinan. Uh, he testified that the project, uh, from a traffic perspective, uh, will operate safely and efficiently, uh, that it's not going to result in a significant detrimental, detrimental impact to the local road system. Really, the traffic generation accounts similar to, to an existing, uh, supermarket, uh, presently. Uh, and he also spoke to the sufficiency of the proposed parking because one of our C-bulk variances is a parking variance. Uh, over the course of, of our first evening of testimony, we did go through all your professional review reports. Uh, we agreed with most of the comments and spoke to a lot of them as we went through the evening. Uh, to refresh the board's recollection, we did agree to, uh, reduce the height and size of the freestanding sign, uh, reducing its height down to 15 feet with a total square footage of 60 square feet. So we still have a sign variance, but we reduced it, uh, from what it had been originally. Uh, we'd agreed to a number of other things, including increasing landscaping along one of the residential buffers, excuse me, on the backside of the building, really just to break up that building facade. So, uh, in terms of this evening, uh, we're gonna pick up, uh, pick up where we left off. I intend to call our project architect, Chelsea Rossin, uh, to go over. You'll be able to see the building and the elevations and floor plans that are, uh, proposed with respect to this new grocery store. Uh, and we also have our project planner. We actually have John McDonough and Nick Ravianno who are both on, uh, who've both worked on this. Excuse me. Uh, before I call Ms. Ross in my first witness, I, I would like to address one issue, uh, that arose during the public comment period back in December. Um, as I stated at the outset, uh, Lidl is the contract, sir, the subject property. Uh, our contract, as is standard with commercial contract, is contingent on us securing all required local, county and state land use approvals. Not just the approval of this board, but we have a DEP, uh, permit that's required, which Mr. Crowder spoke to. Planning Board approval, which we've secured, soil conservation and the like. Um, at such time as all final non-appellable approvals obtained are required to provide notice to the property owner, uh, that is Holly Gardens, uh, owns the property. Um, and they are ultimately required, uh, under the contract to deliver the property to us free and clear of tendencies before we close. Um, if they cannot deliver the property free and clear of such tendencies within the kind of actual timeframes, we have the option to close title, subject to whatever remaining lease term is out there. And I raise because I know you, the board will recall, the Food Town, uh, operator, uh, spoke to, uh, to the lease at the last meeting. Uh, can, we are not sp- uh, really, uh, privy to the specific dealings, uh, between Holly Gardens, the property owner. and the Food Town operator. I don't know anything about their history, their landlord tenant history on the site. I have conferred with Food Town's attorney. I've been advised that they have approximately two and a half to three years that remain on their current lease. I have also spoken to counsel for Holly Gardens. They've advised me that there are no further lease rights pursuant. This is the last extension that that Food Town is operating under. They have also made it clear to me that they do not intend to renew or extend the Food Town lease beyond whatever that remaining term is. So candidly, whatever the lease provides, the lease provides. And if they work out some arrangement for a sooner lease termination between the landlord and the tenant, they will do so. Otherwise, the lease will just run its course. We do have this have this application that's before you. It was filed with the consent of the property owner, and we think we are appropriately before you and permitted to continue with the application. So I just I wanted to make it clear because it came up at the end of the hearing and there was a fair amount of discussion. I know there's been correspondence that's been submitted in this regard as well.
I appreciate you your diligence in that matter. You know, we as the planning board have limited jurisdiction in those manners. And certainly, anything that comes from this board is subject to all the other jurisdictions that are involved here.
Correct. Thank you, Chairman. So at this time, I would like to call Chelsea Rossin, who is on the screen. I know. Yes.
Just for clarification. If the landlord is not able to terminate the lease early, Lidl is prepared to wait the two and a half or three years before they go ahead?
We'll we'll have to see, Mr. Mandel, how that works out. We have the option certainly of closing prior to that time and taking it subject to a lease. We also have have the option of not proceeding with the transaction if we're not satisfied, the timeframes are going to take too long.
Then my my other question is just from standpoint, if we approve this, I am I not correct that there is a time limit as to how long this planning is our approval is good for?
Yes, Chairman. So generally speaking, under the municipal land use law, and we are seeking both preliminary and final site plan approval. With the granting of a final site plan approval, there is a period of protection that is afforded to the developer and basically starts from the date of approval. And basically, it is a period of protection for many changes in zoning. So we're entitled to rely on that. Under the MLUL, we are also requested or entitled, excuse me, to request up to three additional one year extensions of that approval along the way. So there's more than than ample time here. And and again, it it depends on what ultimately is worked out between our contract seller, the property owner, Holly Gardens, and their tenant.
Okay, thank you, John. And I'm calling you, John, because there's no way I'm gonna put you last name.
I understand. Believe me, that's fine.
All right. Before you get started, we would like to make sure that we have adequate time for for the public portion. With that in mind, I'd like to try and have this wrapped up by 10 in terms of your testimony. Do you think that's a reasonable expectation?
I think that is reasonable, Chairman. Again, we have our architect to go over building plans, etc. By the way, I managed to get COVID. I'm on the backside of it, but I bet this this cough that's sticking with me. So I'll try to keep it under control. But I think that I think we have sufficient time if we get moving on it.
I'll try to provide you as much lenience as I can there.
Thank you, Chairman. So my first witness is Chelsea Rossin. She is a project architect. I see her name up. I know she was having some difficulty getting on as a panelist. We do need to see her on the screen.
I think I'm unmuted here. Can you?
We can. You are definitely unmuted.
Awesome.
We do need you. We need you on video as a as a testifying witness, even if it's on your phone. And then we can have we can have Mr. Crowder maybe require. We may need him to provide our exhibits.
Right. He's gonna he's gonna share his screen for me.
Yep.
Can you see me now?
No, there you go.
Hi.
Perfect.
All right. So Ben's Ben's gonna share the exhibits. So if we can enable screen sharing for him.
Yep. So we'll need. Yeah, we'll need Ben Crowder. And you need to be while he's doing that, you need to be sworn in by the board attorney.
Ms. Rossin, do you swear a firm tell the truth for this planning board tonight in this virtual format?
I do.
Okay, counsel.
Okay, Ms. Rossin, can you please provide the board with a brief summary of your educational and professional background and licenses you hold?
Sure. I'm an architect with Larson Design Group. I am licensed in a number of states, Pennsylvania, New York, New Jersey, Ohio, and Virginia. I have my master's degree in architecture from Texas Tech University. And I've been accepted in an expert witness at several boards in New Jersey.
And you have testified with respect to Lidl applications as well.
I absolutely have. Yes.
Thank you.
Do any of the members of the board have questions about the qualifications of Ms. Rossin? All right, hearing none. Ms. Rossin is an acceptable witness for architecture.
Okay. So Ms. Rossin, I'm going to turn the floor over to you. And I know you're going to ask Ben to start sharing screens. So you can can speak to it. Your office prepared the plans that are before the board, and I'd ask you to present in whatever order you prefer.
All right. So if we can pull up the building elevations, there we go. So I'm going to go ahead and start with the colored elevations for the store. This is she A 200A. It's dated 9/28/2020. And at the top of the sheet, you'll see the front or the north elevation. And then we're going to move left to right. We're using a carbon black and an Aspen white brick to break up that that long expanse. And there's also sections of a wood composite material. It's called stone wood. This elevation here is actually anchored by a a stone a stone veneer water table. And that goes all the way across the entire bottom portion. At the far right, you'll see the the corner entrance there. And then yeah. So at the far right, you'll see the corner entrance. And then just to the left of that, there's a small canopy for cart storage. So then the next elevation on that sheet is the back or the southern elevation. This is the one that faces Claudine Terrace. And it's currently composed of a white pearl rough CMU. This was the elevation, I think, that was referenced in the comments provided by Ms. Vivate, and I'll get back to that in just a minute. Towards the bottom of the page, we have the left or the east elevation. This is also the white rough face CMU. And then the right or the west elevation, that one is the main street facing elevation, and it's mostly transparent glazing. There's a shallow canopy, again, with the wood composite material at the corner to show the the entryway. And then down at the very bottom of the sheet, we have the loading dock area. And then Ben, if you'll go to the alternate elevations.
And we should mark this as an exhibit because this differs from what is in the original board packet. Is that correct, Chelsea?
Correct. I think this is going to be A3. So this one is also titled A 200A. And this is alternate elevations. And then it's dated 12/7/2020. And focusing here, we're going to look at the back or the the southern elevation. So this was the one where we've taken in the planner's comments into account. And we've got that repeated rhythm on the backside on the long expanse as well. So we've got the black and white brick, and then also a section of the stonewood panel. And then if you want to pull up the material board. So this is also a new one, I believe.
Yep, A4.
Correct. So this is just a sample of the materials up on the top right. You have the white and the dark rough face CMU. And then going down to the next row from left to right, we've got the black and white brick. And then the gray stone. The next one is the wood composite material. And then all of the metals on the building are a dark charcoal gray. And then on the next one, if you'll go to the plan. All right. So on the building plans, this one was previously submitted. This is A 100A. It's dated 9/28/2020. At the bottom right of the sheet, we have the unique corner entrance that leads to the sales floor with the bakery amenities and the back of house storage wrapping around kind of in an L shape. And those will go across the bottom and the left hand side of the sheet. At the bottom left, we have the generator enclosure. That's part of the building. This was a comment, I believe, number six on the GPI report. The door that accesses that would not be blocked by a truck sitting in the truck. Well, and I know Ben touched on that a little bit on the last meeting. But just to reiterate, if we do want to put a bollard at that door for some extra protection, I I don't think that that's going to be an issue. So we can we can make that accommodation. All right. And if you want to jump to the roof plan. And I'll just go through this really briefly. This is a new one. We'll probably mark this one, I believe, A5. This is A 100A, A 101A. And it's dated 12/7/2020. There are four rooftop units that serve this space, and the roof is surrounded by by really tall parapets on three of the sides. The fourth or the south side is lower for roof drainage. I if we need to do any kind of screening, I believe that we're also open to that. I do have a cut sheet of of a typical screen that we use. Then you can pull it up if you'd like to. We can market. So this is just a sample product. It's called an visor. This is one that we use very often. It's every every client that we've used it with really likes it. We can mark this A6. It's just a simple screening system that that would just kind of block that back elevation from view. And that's all I have.
And Chelsea, generally speaking, that whatever screening we would would use would be of a color that, you know, would blend well with the building and
Right, we would. We would match the other metals on the building, which are that charcoal gray.
Okay. Thank you. I have nothing further.
Ms. Vivate, any questions for the architect?
Yeah, actually, could Mr. Crowder pull up the plans again? Could you put it on the first sheet, the elevation, the new? I think it's actually the next.
Yeah, that's the original. And then we have the alternative, which we marked as A3.
Right, right. So, you know, it's it's the middle elevation that I'm most concerned about, the one facing Claudine Terrace. And this is better. I would urge you to also include at least the the wood looking panels. I just I think that that would not only vary it, but also lighten it a bit, you know, with all those grays, still a bit dark. And you know, that's the entrance into that that residential street. I think that that is a fairly high high visibility elevation. So that would be my recommendation is at least one, if perhaps two, if they could fit of those faux wood panels.
Sure, understood. And we we also added quite a bit of landscaping in between as well.
I see that.
So definitely.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So are you open to including the wood paneling? Because I I agree with Ms. Vivate, it's a assessment there. And that that is a street which does have a significant amount of traffic. I think that would probably add to the appeal of the aesthetic in your store.
Yeah, I guess what what we would probably propose on that, Chairman, is if we could do a single panel and just further enhance the landscaping through that area to work with Ms. Vivate in that regard.
Sure.
Ms. Vivate?
That sounds fine. We can work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cacianno, any questions for the architect?
Yeah, I had the similar comment that, you know, what's referred to as the back of the building is actually the the frontage on Claudine and Crescent Crescent. So it is a a major focal point. So I agree with with the comments so far and the enhanced landscaping. And the architect mentioned that rooftop is not screened. I would recommend that 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 screening that they showed be extended on the south side on the back of the building. Again, it's 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 more or less like a frontage on that side. So that that should be screened from from the public or the rooftop. That would be and that's for the board's consideration. But that that would be my my take on that. Back of the building actually fronts Claudine and Crescent Drive. So screening the wood, the wood material and the landscaping really, really is needed on that face.
I think, Mr. Canjiano, I'm just gonna ask Chelsea to respond. I think we have the same parapet that's around. I think it's just because of the elevations. It's just that one unit that's visible. So that's what we were proposing screening on there.
The parapet extends on either end. But the center is open because of the roof slopes that direction for drainage. So that's that's open for for that reason. But certainly, we could screen the units.
Are you able to keep the screening, you know, a little bit higher so that you're not blocking any kind of drainage flow or any other kind of considerations, but still provide screening?
Right. Exactly. I are you? Are you meaning extend the parapet the full length of the building?
I'm just concerned from that visual aspect from from residents along Claudine and 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 residents driving up Crescent, that the first shot of that building is that back wall, the the south face of the building.
Yeah, I I understand that concern. I think that's that's what we're looking at, the material breakup for and the additional landscaping. I agree, we shouldn't have any of the units showing. You know, the rooftop units, and that would be that would be the screening system that we were showing. Those would block those from view.
Those are my comments. I defer to the board if they, you know, want anything else.
All right. So you're open to putting screening around the mechanics on the rooftop?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Any members of the board have questions for the architect?
Mr. Chairman, Ferriari.
Go ahead, Mr. Ferriari.
Following up on on Mr. Cacianno's suggestion, is there any I'm not, it wasn't clear to me, and it doesn't feel like it's a major expense to elevate screening the full length of that backside. Whatever, I don't think it's going to be than six inches or, you know, to facilitate proper drainage. I'm not sure why, by the time you get done screening each individual unit, you would probably be screening the backside. So I'm not sure why that wouldn't be a good option. And I I I think it is a good idea. We need to be sensitive to the neighborhoods. We've heard from the public in our in the first part of this, there's a lot of concern. And I I I think anything that Lidl can do to show that they want to really fit in and be a good neighbor would go a long way to making this proposal acceptable. So that my question at the beginning of all that. So that my question at the beginning of all that is, why not just do the whole backside and raise it six inches?
Sure, we can certainly look at that. I'll, I can get back with our client. I don't, I don't think that I have the authority to make that change to the plans, but I'll certainly check back with them and, and we'll do what we can.
Okay. That's all for me.
Alright, and Mr. Caggianno, you'd be able to work with the architect to make sure that they're meeting that requirement?
Yes.
Alright, very good. Any other board members with questions for the architect? Alright, and just confirming, we, we, we are requesting for the bollard to be in place at the generator room.
Yes, I continue to request that.
Great. Alright, I think that takes care of our questions for the architect. Mr. Wissakala?
I'm sorry, Chairman, I was talking.
Hey, John, I'm here.
At this time, I know I saw John McDonough just waving his hand.
I'm here. Hi, everyone.
Okay, Chairman, if I may?
Please go ahead, swearing witness.
Mr. McDonough, do you swear a firm tell truth for this planning board in this virtual format tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Counsel, go ahead and try and not qualify Mr. McDonough.
Mr. McDonough, you've been qualified here before. Is your license still in good standing as a professional planner?
Yes, it is.
Chairman, do you want me to go further with qualifications?
If you would, please.
Quick summary, John, of your educational, professional background and licenses you hold.
Sure thing. Hi, everyone. John McDonough, business address 101 Gibraltar Drive in Parsippany, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. That license is current and in good standing. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is a national certification. Again, both current and good standing. I am a landscape architect. I don't know that we necessarily need me in that capacity this evening. My primary role here is as the project planner.
Alright, thank you very much. Do any members of the board have any questions for Mr. McDonough's qualifications as a planner? Alright, Mr. McDonough, you're an acceptable witness. Mr. Wissakala, please continue.
Mr. McDonough, you're familiar with the project that's before the board this evening. If you would please present testimony with respect to your thoughts from a planning perspective and the variance relief that's being requested this evening.
Sure thing, John. So as the board well knows, we're here in the B3 zone along North Beverick Road. Where this use is permitted and has, in fact, has been here for a very, very long time. I have 1970 in my notes. We know it's under the Food Town brand now. I think I remember at one point it was the Grand Union, if I remember right, but I see some head nods. So, yes, again, land use changes. This is a land use that has been static on this site and, and branding changes as well. And that's consistent with, with the evolution of what the applicant and the, and the landowner is proposing here as well. I do have some planning visuals, which I believe were handed up to the board as a predicate for my planning conclusions. I can launch into them or I could skip right over them in the, in the interest of time at this point, John. I'll kind of leave it up to you.
We have time, so just make it quick.
Okay, gotcha. So, I don't know, Nora or someone, do I need permission to share my screen here? Or if Ben, if you have control, do you have my planning exhibits? I am now the presenter.
You are presenter, okay.
Mr. Hoffgren's all over this.
Bear in mind here, I just got a.
We're up to A7, John, whenever you start.
Can everybody see a, a tax parcel map on the screen now?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just going to scroll through them. I think there's seven slides here. We'll start with the very basic and work up to some, some ground specific sites, shots rather. But we're dealing with a single tax lot right here on North Beverick Road. Obviously, it's one of the largest sites in the area. A single tax lot, block 483, Lot 1. With frontage on three streets, you've got the primary frontage on North Beverick. You've got frontage on Claudine as well. And then, of course, you've got a frontage or a piece of frontage on Nokemis Avenue as well. The next slide shows the built-out condition of the property with the grocery store supermarket in the back close to the homes on Nokemis Avenue. The open area in the back, we'll get to that in a little bit. And of course, the generally commercial nature of what we see as we ride up and down on, on North Beverick Road. This is basically the, what you've seen for the last 30, 40, 50 years or so, since 1970. So the third slide now shows a color coding of the surrounding land use context. Everything you see in red is based on our MOD 4 land use classification system. It's all non-residential uses. Everything you see in gold or yellow are residential uses. So obviously, this is the sensitive area, I'll say. And what's nice about this application is that the applicant is making the buffer associated with the residential area greener, bigger. So it is an improvement over that which presently exists. Likewise, we've got homes over on Claudine, and then we've got the park to the back. And then we do have catty corner to the site, another non-residential use in the form of the, the first aid facility. So again, flipping down to the fourth slide, we are here in the B3 zone. This is the portion of the B3 zone that actually does jet out into the surrounding residential zones. So there is recognition here. What we call existing use zoning, that does recognize the longstanding non-residential use of, of this portion. And again, this land use is going to evolve now with the application before you. But in all respects, the applicant is making the, I'll say, the non-conformances better than that which presently exists. And just to give you a picture of what you all know and what you see, what we saw when we were on the site right before Thanksgiving. The super food town in the back, you get a sense of the signs. The applicant is asking relief for four signs here where, where two are allowed. The setback from the road, which is actually more non-conforming than what the applicant is proposing here. And again, just the general build out of what a supermarket would have been back in the, in the 1970s. Scrolling to number six, we get a sense of what's across the street with the retail development and the riot aid as its anchor. Again, just emphasizing that North Beverick Road is a commercial corridor here leading to the north side of town. And then finally, just a last shot, the applicant does need some relief for signage here to remind the board that there is a, a concentration of signs in the front of the property right now. I think there's been good movement on the part of the applicant to lessen or reduce the magnitude of the relief going down from a 20-foot-high sign to a 15-foot sign, which will integrate more with what we see on the site right now and in terms of the surrounding land use context. With that, I'm going to stop sharing. And we'll just launch into the planning proofs here. All of the relief that the applicant is seeking is reconcilable under what we call the C2 flexible C balancing test as a better zoning alternative for the property. Again, we're not here for use relief. We're just here for bulk or C-level relief. On the positive side, the benefits are pretty clear based on the testimony that's on the record. The project will promote site revitalization and modernization, newer lights, better handicap accessibility, drainage improvements. All of those things that you heard through Ben's testimony at the outset. The project will continue the longstanding use at this particular site. As I said, land use evolves, but there is clearly a strong association with this land use at this particular location. This is going to be a fresh new image. Again, just a, a rebranding, if you will, to, to put this as a modern supermarket grocery store. It is a project that will provide for jobs, including local jobs oriented at youth or first-time jobs. And the use itself provides convenient access to food and basic needs for the public good. Again, that's why it's a permitted use here. There is a sign package that's coming in, which is going to be nicely integrated with what you just saw as far as the architectural package was concerned. And in harmony with the building and the nice clean look of the overall site. In terms of the potential impacts, we always look at the individual relief that the applicant is seeking and weigh them against the project betterments as a whole. In terms of the relief that the applicant is seeking, I believe that relief can be granted without creating substantially adverse impacts to the public. First, we've got a front yard setback of 21 feet versus 50 feet, which is similar to the setback that exists today with better buffering of the homes that are immediately adjacent. As I said, the residential buffer also needs relief. 6.9 feet is what the applicant is proposing versus 20 feet, which is what's required, which is also an improvement over the existing condition. The lot coverage is at 88%, I'm sorry, 88.3% or 75% is the maximum that's allowed. That is also an improvement over the existing condition. The parking count, I'll fall back on the predicate of the traffic expert before me at the last hearing. The supply of 146 versus 207 meets the operator ratio in what is a well-tested model of 4.7 per 1,000. The loading count of one versus the two also meets the operational needs of what is a well-tested model as well. The loading dimensions likewise at 103.6 feet versus 147 feet is adequate to accommodate the WB67 tractor trailer that will be utilized on this site. Lastly, the, the bucket of relief related to the freestanding sign to have an area of 60 square feet versus 25 square feet. A width of 6.25 feet versus six feet. And a clearance of 5.7 versus eight is all in line with the newer, modern version of, of what is presently out there now. And you saw the sign package that, that's presently out there. Likewise, the building relief to have four signs versus the two and the vertical dimension of 8.2 versus two feet. All is justified as a very tasteful package. This is not going to be gaudy. This is not going to be something that will violate any of the planning principles for preventing overbranding or visual clutter or sign clutter. Again, a nice, tight, nicely integrated sign package. All said, this is going to be a very positive upgrade of what has been a longstanding use at this particular location. Substantially in conformance with the intent and purpose of the zone plan and certainly moving the site more into conformance with your bulk and design requirements. Well said, this is a very application for North Beverick Road and for the area, for the community at large. And with that, I would offer that the applicant has met its statutory burden here. Absorbing all the testimony that's on the record as the predicate for my planning conclusions. And in that regard, with that, I will pause here for any redirect or cross. John, I think you're muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have nothing further, John. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Fivate, do you have anything for Mr. McDonough?
Yeah, Mr. McDonough, there are also a few waivers, I believe, the applicant is requesting. Can you through those? Just so that it's clear for everyone.
Sure thing. Except my screen with your report on there froze, so I don't have access to it. I'm doing double screens here and looking through. So I, I don't have that list of relief, but I would offer that I believe they were dimensional related and landscape related, all for all within the lower standard of reasonableness and impracticality. For the testimony of designers before me, that this is going to be designed in accordance with sound engineering principles. And in that regard, I would offer that the standard of reasonableness is met. And also the standard of impracticability is met, which as we know means no practical planning purposes served by strict or, or literal adherence to the ordinance.
Okay, and as you said, I believe we summarized them in a, in a previous memo. If you, if you accept that, they're in the record.
I, I do, yes.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Fivate, if I am correct on it, I know you had identified the possibility of waivers on the critical slope areas. We did have testimony in that regard, I believe, and you'll probably get confirmation from Ben Crowder. The areas actually fall below each individual area, below whatever the threshold is for that. So I don't think we need relief, but I did want to just confirm that.
Okay, yeah, if you could confirm that, Mr. Crowder, that would be great.
Ben? Ben is still, Ben is on, and maybe I can just call him. I will remind him, counsel, he's still under oath. He was sworn at the previous hearing. And Ben, if you could just speak to that, please.
Mr. Crowder, you can proceed yours, as counsel indicated, you are still under oath.
Yep, thank you. And then, John, this is specific to the steep slopes, I believe?
Correct.
Correct, yeah, okay. So there, there are some limited steep slope areas around the property, very small, isolated areas. We had done a deep slopes map as part of our site plan application, but as your ordinance permits, all of these areas are man-made and less than 1,000 square feet in size. Thereby, there are provisions that, you know, they aren't considered as part of the disturbance calculations for each steep slope category for the project. Since, as, as you've heard me in prior testimony, the site is almost entirely developed property line to property line, a lot of which is impervious coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Caggianno, any questions for Mr. McDonough?
Any questions?
I'll open up to the board for questions then. Any questions from the board for Mr. McDonough? Okay. Very good. And Mr. Wissakala? Oh, I'm going to get that right.
That's alright. Chairman, I would like to actually just recall Chelsea Rossin. We had the opportunity to communicate regarding that question about the parapet on the backside.
Very good.
Ms. Rossing, you're muted. Now you're not.
I'm not muted. I, I was able to talk with our client. I think that's something we're amenable to. So we can, we can count on doing a parapet. We would probably match the height of the lower side going across enough to screen those RTUs.
And that's it. Alright, we'll make sure that's included.
And we have no further witnesses, Chairman.
Okay. Well, in that case, we'll go ahead and open up the public portion for questions.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes, Ms. Fivate.
I'm not going to try to pronounce his name, but John.
John's fine. Witcher Scala, for the record.
Great. Um, I, I believe that was some correspondence from the water department. Did you want to update the board on?
Oh, yeah, I think we actually, yeah, no, that's a great point. I think we actually got a, a favorable response regarding our water calculations and the like. Ben, can you please provide the board with an overview? Cause I think that came in recently.
Yeah, absolutely. About two weeks ago, we, a little bit after our first hearing in December, we had finalized our water demand report in coordination with Mr. Wawarka at the Water and Sewer Department, as Parsippany does have their water scarcity review out. And basically, you looked at the existing water demand of currently serving the Food Town as well as the Balowit Restaurant that is operating today. Compared that to water usage data we have for larger Lidl stores that are actually open and operating in the state of New Jersey at this point, and basically formulated all of that water data to the Water and Sewer Department. And a couple of weeks ago, got a review back from Water saying that they agreed with our analysis and the project can proceed and, and demand is not likely to increase with this project.
Yeah, and, and just to confirm for the board, that they are under the threshold established by the scarce water resources order.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Mr. Witcher Scala, you're, you're all done with your presentation then?
We are all done with our direct presentation, Chairman. Thank you.
Alright, very good. Okay, so with that in mind, if any members of the public would like to ask any questions of the witnesses that have been presented, not just at this meeting, but at the meeting on December 7th as well, where we heard from Mr. Sandalands, Mr. Crowder, Mr. Dinan. And today again from Ms. Rossin and Mr. McDonough. Please go ahead and. please go ahead and raise your hands, and we will call on you as appropriate. Please keep any questions to a minimum of two, just for the purposes of allowing other people to be able to ask their questions as well. And you're certainly welcome to get back online after others have been able to ask their questions. So, Mr. Hoffker, if you could open that up? Okay, I am not seeing any questions for the witnesses. Is that just me, or is that how it is? More?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. In that, oh, I do see a hand raised.
One just raised.
Okay. So I see Diana and Vidson.
There we go. Yes, Diana Arbison. Hi.
Diana, could you also give your address for the record?
Sure, it's 130 Longview Avenue, Lake Hiwata.
Thank you.
Okay. So I have one question. There has been a petition that was circulated. There has been numerous correspondence with different people. So my question is really for John W. I know that this is going to make great improvements visually, but the community is not in support of this particular store brand. And why would a company want to move into a location where the community is not really wanting their products?
That's a question for me, the attorney?
Yeah.
Okay, so, well, I've been made aware of a petition that's being circulated. I'm not sure it has a place in the context of this land use hearing. We think this is a great location for us. I can't speak to the breadth of folks, but it is a permitted use that's in the zone. And my client is looking forward, if this board is inclined to grant an approval, to become a member of this community and to redevelop this site.
Okay, well, I wish them luck, because right now, the community isn't supporting them. Mr. Ben Aken, my question is, this planning board hearing and these approvals are totally based on legalities, correct? I mean, there's really nothing from a community standpoint that has any play in any of this. Am I correct?
To a limited extent, there are certainly legal aspects involved. The applicant is asking, is required to present their site plan before the board and show us what they're looking to do. They're also then asking for certain variances, which it's up for the board to determine if those variances, so specifically the variances that have been brought up, have a positive or are being requested to create a benefit or a detriment. And we have to balance the positive and benefit and the detriment that those variances may or may not cause.
Okay. Hey, I'm gonna just leave it at that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think I have a second hand up from Nita Donlin.
Hi, this is Nita Donlin, 33 Ridgewood Avenue. I guess personal feelings aside that, yes, most people that I know are also against this as well. However, my main question, I guess, that pertains to the board and the Lidl community here. I know last month's meeting, we talked about the traffic, and you had looked into traffic. Now, when was this done? Because traffic for the past year with the pandemic thing here is considerably less, because most people are working from home. During the regular time, and that, you know, traffic has been, you know, a lot more in that area, especially Everwick Avenue Road. My other question is that, as a shopper, I personally prefer to go to Food Town and pay more because it's a lot less congestive in there, then there's less people. If I could go to ShopRite or some other place, there's a lot more people, and I prefer to stay away from that. As a business owner, Lidl is planning on increasing business and have more for business, so therefore, more traffic, you know, because you're not gonna spend all this money and all this resources on something that's not gonna make you money. So, you know, traffic is gonna be more than whatever it is currently. So what is the proposal of this? How was it actually, when was it checked? Like, now you're looking into the past, or was traffic checked from previous to that? That's my main question. So, somebody who lives close to here, this is, and I'm gonna be one of your main shoppers, and I'm gonna be really annoyed if traffic is a lot worse than the current audience.
That's a fair question, and we have Jared Dinan, who was our traffic consultant, and he spoke at the last meeting, but I'll ask Jared, you heard the question, and why don't you speak to your methodology, et cetera? Because we are in this COVID era where you're doing traffic counts. They're not necessarily what they normally are, but if you could speak to the methodology and what your findings were again, because I know it's been a couple of months since we were last here.
Certainly. Just to remind everyone of my previous testimony, our traffic data collection was done March 7, 2020 and March 11, 2020. This was before the COVID stay-at-home orders were given on March 21, 2020. Just to remind everyone, the existing site and the proposed Lidl grocery store is a pretty equal traffic impact to this area. Our site will increase trips by about 60 vehicles over what's there today. So it's a nominal increase that equates to about one car every minute increase. And that does include in and out trips. So realistically, you could be seeing 30 cars go in, 30 cars go out. So just to kind of put some context to it.
But with all due respect, beginning of March of 2020, even though the official, you know, stay-at-home wasn't until the following week, schools closed on March 15th. That first week of March, you know, a lot of people had, you know, myself included, we had less in our trips out. So by March, we were, you know, the COVID was here, especially in North Jersey. You know, a lot of us knew people who already had it at that point. So, you know, a lot of people were being a lot more careful. And we were at that point already being told, you know, limit your trips to shopping. So we were not going as much as, you know, my husband himself was working from home at that time. And I know a lot of people who are working from home by the beginning of March. So a proper traffic wouldn't, you know, and, you know, by all respects, you're gonna expect a lot more than like 16 cars, you know, per hour to go to the store. I mean, otherwise, we're not spending all this money in rebuilding a building. I come from a business background, and you will be expecting more.
No, I just correct what I said there. I said an additional 60 over what's there to now, not a total of 60 only, just to clarify. You're muted, John. John, you're muted.
Jared, and just to clarify, when you're talking about 60 additional trips, you are talking on the Saturday peak, correct?
That is correct. During a PM peak hour, it is less. It's about 25 additional trips, based on our calculations.
And a trip, each trip, each trip is an in and an out, so.
That is correct. Total trips, yes, entering and exiting.
Thank you.
You know, being, again, a local resident, especially weekdays, you know, till like at 5:00 PM, 6:00 PM, traffic, that Beverwick is like back-to-back coming into Lake Hiwata. And in the mornings around like 8:30, 9:00 AM, you have to wait up to the firehouse or even the darys, which is the Hiwata Boulevard or Lakeshore Drive, in order to get to the Vale Street light or even up to closer 46. So, you know, our morning traffic weekdays are pretty bad here. They're not as bad over the weekends.
Understood.
Okay. Next question is from Trina Reed. Trina, please state your name and address for the record.
Trina Reed, 1092 Littleton Road. So the last time that we had this meeting, is it true still that there will be no food store, no pharmacy, or no restaurant there for about 22 months? Is that correct?
No. And I will clarify that. I'm not even going to, I'm actually gonna ask Mr. Sandalands to come back on, to testify and to clarify. I'm not gonna speculate as to when there would be a property closing, but to properly frame it, and I'm gonna take your question and frame it. You correct me if I'm wrong. Mr. Sandalands, at such time as you close on this property, assuming we get approvals and we get through, you close on the property. Can you please provide an answer relative to what is the start-to-finish time from, you know, assuming from building permit issuance for demolition to the anticipated for demolition to the opening of the store?
Yeah, so about, so when we start mobilizing for construction, it should be about 10 to 12 months. Start of construction to opening.
So there's still, there's still gonna be no store there for, again, a lot of the senior citizens that go there. There's also a pharmacy, my pharmacy, that will not be there. Where are those people supposed to go? Especially with the COVID right now? Because I'll tell you, that pharmacy has been a godsend to that neighborhood and to senior citizens.
There is a drugstore across the street.
No, a lot of people, I'll tell you, I've gone to these big drugstores, and you're not a person, you're a number. Atta at that pharmacy has a lot of the customers because he is a small business. He grew up in Parsippany, and so he's helped a tremendous amount of people during this time. So if he was to go to, there's a question, if he goes out of business, what is the town prepared to do to help him, help the other businesses to relocate? What is the town prepared to do?
Trina, I'm afraid that the witnesses are not able to answer that question, and none of the board members have jurisdiction over that area of questioning. I appreciate the question, but nobody on this board is able to answer that for you.
Can you tell me where I could go for that? I'd really like to get an answer for that.
Mr. DiPiero, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that'd be a council question.
You're wrong.
Okay. What would be the right place for her to go, so she can get an answer?
There really is no place, because technically, this is a landowner that's decided to sell his property. We have no jurisdiction over that. We are bound to follow the land use laws and traffic and aesthetics, but those concerns are outside of the realm of the planning board or the council.
Okay, so it just to me basically says that when we are told in November to shop local, it's the town doesn't really care about that, because we're willing to have this big supermarket come in and, you know, hurt all of these. I go with the senior citizens, because I see them there all the time. And those people will have to try to get transportation down to ShopRite, will have to transfer to different pharmacies, and I can guarantee you, they will not get the service that they get from Atta, especially during COVID. You know, him making deliveries and helping all these people, it's not gonna happen in these other stores. So basically, I know there's nothing I can do. I just really want to state that. And I really have no problem saying that the owner of this property is a disgrace for doing what he's doing. And that's my comment.
Thank you, Trina.
Trina, your comment is understood. And I'm sure the entire planning board understands your concern on this issue. All along North Beverick Road, over the years, I've received a lot of complaints that we have too many pizza parlors and too many nail salons on North Beverick Road. We should get something different. Well, the town can't dictate to an owner of a property what kind of tenant he should take. That's, Mark will dictate that. We don't have any jurisdiction over that. Someone owns property, they have a right to do, or to rent to who they want. We can't tell them how to handle their own property. All we can do is make sure that whatever goes there, it meets the land use laws and it meets our zoning ordinances. And the planning board or the Board of Adjustment has reviewed the applicant properly.
Again, there's nothing more that I can say. I'm just really not happy about the situation. All of these people who are gonna be out of a job, because they are union there. And Lidl is not a union company. So these people will lose the benefits of being in a union and everything. He can't hire those people and say he can, because they're union. Is he going to have a union there? Is there gonna be a union in Lidl? No. Correct? Is there a union? Are they unionized?
We're not, I don't think it's an appropriate question, Chairman, at this time.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. I see a question from Atlanta Cisco Brett. Please give your name and address for the record.
Alana Brett for Jagged Rock Road in Parsippany. An answer was never given to the woman who asked about the traffic two speakers ago. She asked specifically, what solution do you have? To which no one answered. So I was just wondering if there was some solutions that will be provided about the traffic situation?
So I think our traffic engineer did speak to that. He spoke at the first meeting and testified in his professional opinion that this project will not have a deleterious or substantial impact on traffic, that the site can handle, can handle the development. It's existed as a supermarket, and will continue to operate as a grocery store operation.
Is there a backup plan in case the traffic does worsen? It's just a few solutions, and I'm not asking you for that now, but I think this should be taken into consideration and provided at a future meeting.
So, Ms. Brett, the challenge we have here is we're not able to claim any jurisdiction on the roadways outside of the property. We can speak to the queues that are involved, but we can't speak to the impact outside of the property.
I understand your position and your limitations. It does seem that there are a lot of questions that can be answered, so it would be helpful to provide who can speak to these things then for all of the participants who stayed on to ask questions. That's all. Thank you.
Sure. So I see the hand for Diana is also up again. Diana, did you have another question?
Yes. I just wanted to go back to the traffic. At the last meeting, we, it was brought up about how hard it is for people to cross North Beverick Road and the possibility of putting up like a button that people could, you know, push to get the cars to stop to allow them to cross the road. Is that going to be a consideration that can be taken into account?
I'll ask you to address that to the extent you can. It's not a municipal jurisdiction issue, though, I believe.
I believe you're correct. Ms. Vavate, are you able to address that question?
I believe Mr. Cantiano would be better equipped as, as the board's, uh, transportation engineer.
Sure, sure. Sorry about that, yeah.
I believe, um, it is a county road, I think. Is that correct?
Um, it, this is Andrew Cantiano. Um, it's, it's actually municipal road and yeah, there's, I mean, it's a common issue. The, the road is very, uh, busy, um, but it's more of a regional issue, uh, more than just this application. So, uh, I don't know if this board, you know, if we have any real authority to start having them, you know, making wholesale improvements to North Bevick. So I, I think it's just, um, the testimony was that there was a certain amount of increase, um, to an already busy, um, roadway system. Um, I, I don't know, um, I mean, the applicant can testify if it, what their impact is on the roadway. Um, but, um, I don't know that the applicant's responsible to, to be fixing the, the existing roadway congestion issues. Uh, but they should be responsible to testify on their impact, uh, the level of service that, that they're, uh, changing from the existing condition.
Thank you. So one of the other pieces to that was they were going to change the in and out. Um, how people get into the parking lot and out of the parking lot? And that was going to affect the traffic pattern, especially making the left-hand turn? Has that been addressed? Is it going to stay as was proposed or, um, after the concerns that were brought up the last meeting, were they looking at making any changes to that?
So I think that, that's actually, that's actually a good question. I know, uh, we actually did talk about some interior modifications for queuing. Ben, maybe you can address that? You're muted.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, to circle back on some of the testimony I had, uh, in December, you know, under existing conditions along Bevick Road. Um, there's significantly wide curb cuts along that entire frontage. You have, you know, two ingress driveways that are extremely wide and then one point of, of egress along that Bevick frontage. And what we had looked at in conjunction with, uh, Mr. Dinnon's traffic study and internal review is, is consolidating that into, uh, one access point onto North Bevick that serves as an ingress, but also designing a designated left-hand turn lane and right-hand turn lane as you were egressing the site. Um, that also helped, uh, promote some of the questions that just came up about pedestrian connectivity, certainly along the frontage, um, working with some widened paver walkways, you know, potentially some future work along that frontage and providing that connectivity for some of the bus stops to the front of the, the building. And I think, um, you know, I don't want to speak for Mr. Dinnon, but in looking at the queue length, certainly as you exit the site relative to the left and right-hand turn, um, you know, he was, he was in support of that. I don't want to speak for him. Um, but we had looked at that as you approached the, the Bevick access point and kind of consolidating. And also supplementing, you know, a secondary access point to, to Claudian Terrace, which was immediately to the south as another, um, secondary ingress egress point, fairly similar to what's there today, um, but just aligned at the front of the store.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, may I raise a point here?
Please go ahead, Mr. Mandel.
Um, I don't know if the applicant is familiar with the King's supermarket in Morristown. But they have that same issue where their entrance and exit is on a very main road. And they have solved that somewhat during peak hours by having an officer there, uh, controlling traffic. There is no traffic light, but there is an officer who will allow people to exit the parking lot and also allow people to make the left turn across traffic into the parking lot. Has that been considered at all by Lidl?
Mr. Mandel, we didn't, uh, we, we haven't considered that. Um, we think that our, our traffic testimony supports it. It is a use that is permitted. Uh, your ordinance specifically allows this use. Um, so we, we don't, we just haven't viewed that as a necessity. We, we do understand how busy, you know, this area is and, you know, and the need for gaps and people to wait as, as Mr. Dinnon said back in December, uh, but we think that's sufficient.
Okay, uh, I see another hand raised for Gordon Meth. Mr. Meth, uh, please give your name and address for the record.
Certainly. My name is Gordon Meth and I live at 51 Calumet Avenue, Kiawatha, New Jersey.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so I, I guess, uh, it's, it's almost a follow-up to the last person's question. I mean, my recollection is there was some testimony that there be revisions to the, um, the driveway access internal of the site. My question is, uh, it's simple. Did, were revised plans submitted to this board 10 days prior to this meeting?
No.
Okay, so the board is being asked to vote on a, a plan that they haven't seen? And that your, their engineer hasn't had a chance to review? Is that correct?
Well, I thought we talked about, uh, modifications and I can certainly have Mr. Crowder speak to whatever it was we had discussed at the prior meeting. I don't think it was any significant change, Mr. Meth.
Okay, I understand. I just, I know that there, there was some, a lot of concern about the, uh, queuing and the turn lanes. That's, that's the area I was kind of interested in. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Witchesgala.
You're welcome, Mr. Meth.
Okay, uh, I'm going to return to, uh, Diana again as your hand is still raised. I just want to make sure there's no other question?
No, I'm sorry. I, I don't, I'll figure out how to un, ease my hand.
No problem.
Lower. There we go. Got it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanted to add that we still are requesting that condition be applied, that the plans we revise for the, for, uh, the, uh, adjusting that throat and, and the queue aisles and, and the parking so that we can, uh, maximize the, uh, the queuing and the queuing stall in that driveway.
Yes, I believe the concern was that the left-hand lane, uh, if it reached a queue of more than three would wind up blocking access to the right-hand turn lane.
Correct.
Yeah.
I request that.
And we agree to that. We, yeah, I think we spoke to that last time.
Yeah. All right. I see a hand raised from Iris Caprioni.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please give your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Iris Caprioni. We're at 11 Lodge Lane here in Parsippany, right around the corner from the Food Town. First off, we've used the Food Town for over 25 years. And I also, I agree with the other residents that I don't know anybody who is, who wants this change in our town. Don't want this big company coming in here. But, uh, my question is about the lease. Is that, if I'm understanding correctly, nothing can happen until that lease situation is resolved. Is that correct?
Yes, either, either the lease situation, I, I will speak to it, though it really has no bearing on the board decision. But, uh, but I spoke to it at the first, uh, instance. Um, it, that lease, uh, has, according to reports, uh, approximately two and a half to three years remaining.
Okay.
The landlord has said they do not intend, uh, to renew the lease. So that lease will either run its full course, uh, unless the landlord, um, works out some arrangement with, uh, Mr. LaRaca, the Food Town, uh, operator, that, you know, that's, that's where it is.
So that's, that's where you are right now. Okay. So that, nothing can, I'm so, I'm glad you're getting better, but I'm so sorry. We're making you talk. This is awful.
It's all right. It's what I do and I feel fine.
I'm so sorry, but I do want to say, um, just as an aside, the pharmacist, Atta, he is, he is, they all are. We have a butcher, we have a grocer, we have the belly people, we have, um, they, you know, it's just, it's like Mayberry RFD. That's the town of Lake Kiawatha. And, um, so we really, as a resident, I really hope that, um, that they honor their lease because, you know, land, um, owner can do whatever he wants with this property, that's correct. But I just hope that he honors the lease because these are good people. I don't know where, you know, people are from, but these are good people. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you. Thank you for your time and feel better.
I understand. Thank you so much for the comment.
Yes.
And Iris, I really appreciate you, um, standing up for, for the current owners and, uh, you, you said it very well.
Oh, good. And I don't know how to un, unhook.
No problem, but you, you're all set then, right?
I'm done. I'm good.
Okay. All right. So that, that was our question phase. Uh, I'm going to open it up more broadly if any of the, uh, members of the general public would like to add a comment at this time. I, I know we've already had some comments given and, and, uh, we'll, we'll just make sure everybody knows that at this point you can provide your commentary. So, uh, yes, who's speaking?
Napolitano, uh, can we just remind the, uh, public to make sure they're muted if they're not talking?
Absolutely. Okay, and I, I believe we have Neta Donaldin. Uh, the floor is yours. Please give your name and address one more time for the record.
Terry, Neta mentioned, uh, yes.
There, you're off mute now.
Okay, sorry. Neta Donaldin, 33 Ridgwood Avenue. I just wanted to give a follow-up comment to, I believe, Terry, um, that was talking about Atta and Food Town. I just, the people who are not familiar with, um, the pharmacy, I know Mr. Sandell so quickly shrugged his shoulder and said, you use, uh, Rite Aid across the street. It's like if you had like a top of a line like Lexus or BMW with all the bells and whistles and somebody took away your car and said, here's a clunker, use us. Yes, they're both transportation and they'll get you from A to B, but trust me, not the same. As, uh, again, a consumer who I've used Shop Right, I've used Walgreens, I've used Rite Aid. Rite Aid on two different instances gave me the wrong medication. Imagine that. Atta during the pandemic brought my medication to my house, dropped it off at my door, didn't take payment until two months later. This is what we're talking about when we say we love Atta. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments today. Uh, you know, I, I think it speaks so well of Atta that so many people have been willing to come out and, and, uh, say nice things about the business that he provides. So thank you. Any other comments from the general public? Iris, I'm going to come back to you only because I see your hand is still raised.
Sorry, I don't know how to un, 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 wait.
That, that's okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure you're good.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. All right. Uh, seeing no other comments at this time, I, I'm going to go ahead and close the public portion. I, I'm sorry, one more person seems to have raised their hand. Uh, Yufat Nasser.
My name's Yufat Nasser, uh, for Rockaway, I'm Parsippany. Uh, just a quick question, will, will Little Dell even have a pharmacy? Will it just, there's like no, uh, thought of maybe having a pharmacy there or?
Uh, and I'll, I'll answer the question that was asked of Mr. Sandalands. Uh, we do not provide pharmacy services. At least it's not part of their business model at this time. It's not to say, that may not change in the future, but, uh, but we're not proposing a pharmacy here.
Okay, and was Food Town, I don't know, maybe you don't know, but would Food Town have like, um, an opportunity to maybe like, create some of the changes that the planning board wants and then maybe just keep Food Town? Is that other, another, like, you know, because I mean, I was just seeing Little Dell also is getting a lot of waivers and like some of the things that Food Town had wrong was, you know, the, the distance, uh, problem, the drainage problem, the parking problem. But Lidl also got a lot of waivers, so like they still are not meeting all the things that were wrong with Food Town per se. You know?
Um, you know, this isn't really an area where we're making a decision.
And they are not still, and actually you have fewer parking spots, but you want to increase business. So I mean, it just seems like, you know, it's, it's not like Lidl is totally going to solve all the problems that Food Town, you know, may have had like with drainage and distance between neighbors because.
Right, yeah, but yes, no, it, it, listen, it's a fair question. I, I really can't speak to the lease. Uh, and yes, you are correct. We do have variances in waivers. A, a good number of them are existing conditions that are improving. Uh, you recall the testimony of our engineer and planner. Uh, the site currently is, uh, just over 95% paved and pervious coverage. Uh, we are reducing that down to about 88%, adding close to 9,000 square feet of green space that doesn't exist today. Uh, with increased buffers, uh, we are significantly enhancing the, uh, the drainage that is out there, uh, today. Largely a sheet flow situation and we're taking it into the system and directing it. Um, you know, uh, you know, using energy efficient lighting, uh, new building design, et cetera. So, you know, yes, we do, we do have variances in waivers that have been identified. Uh, in large part, uh, those deviations are being diminished from what exists out there. Uh, for this, you know, historic, I guess, original Grand Union, uh, store, which became a Food Town at some point.
And I, I would just add to that, the board did not, um, make any decisions or any opinions about the existing site. Um, we're merely making, uh, an opinion about, uh, the application that is being presented.
Hmm, okay. All right, thank you. And, um, again, Atta is like a very, um, you know, popular person because, you know, he's always providing a hundred percent, uh, you know, customer service, so.
I, I can see that. And, and so I, I hope.
And the thing is like, people like us have lived there for 30 years and you see the same faces every single day for 30 years. And you kind of like, you know, they become very close to you. So, and that's like really hard for like people to see them out of a job, you know, you've known them for 20 years and stuff, and you see them out of a job and then, then you, and like, like, it's like they would, could walk into Food Town then, you know, now would, you know, the, the city won't be able to provide them a bus to go to Shop Right. Or, you know, like people that were walking there and it's just like, it's going to be very disruptive and it's hard for everyone.
I, I appreciate your comments and regardless of what the outcome of this application is, I, I hope that, um, uh, Atta finds, finds a way to continue his, his business.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, I see Ms. Metal, uh, Gail Napolitano, please. Please give your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi. Gail Napolitano, P O Box 94, Lake Kiawatha, New Jersey, 07034.
Go ahead.
Quick question. I've been in town for about 54 years, my family. Uh, I've contributed quite a bit here, went to the Grand Union, certainly went to Food Town. Did, um, the planning board or the Dell, did they take into consideration certainly for Atta's services? Maybe do a small sublease within Lidl? And offer that, you know, certainly keep that portion?
Uh, that, would it be within our jurisdiction? I, I would say that, uh, Lidl is certainly, I, I'm not sure what the sublease rules are for that space.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, uh, you know, Lidl would have certain, certain abilities to decide what services they want to provide uh, in, in the lease, the spaces that they're leasing.
Right. Well, maybe we could ask, uh, John? Hi, John.
Hi, yeah, I, and, and, uh, again, it's a good question. I, I think Iris had asked the same question. Maybe it was Iris, I'm not sure. Uh, we have no plans, uh, for a pharmacy at this time. You know, we, we hear the comment. Um, and we'll certainly take it under advisement.
Well, I think it would be a great asset to do that, certainly, you know, and to, uh, I mean, he's, does, he provides tremendous service. I have an elder mom, I have a brother who's disabled, um, then I'm caregivers too. And they, um, I mean, Atta was just here the other night, uh, delivering, you know, medicine for my brother. So he's, he goes above and beyond and he would be a great asset. So to give him, you know, a small space, let him sublease. I think that would be terrific. I think that would be something that's very compassionate and, uh, extending back into the community again. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, are there any other members of the public that would like to make a comment at this time? Please raise your hand. All right. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make a comment at this time? Please raise your hand. It looks like Ata Raymond.
Hello. Hi.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Ata Rahman and I'm at 14 Wolf Place, Parsippany. I am the pharmacist that everyone seems to be speaking of this evening. I'm actually flattered and I truly appreciate all the comments. I think this is a situation in which, like, has been discussed already. The variance is not in regards to the pharmacy, it's not in regards to, you know, landlord versus tenant in this case, it's really about the variances that were presented as far as the soiling and whatever else that is moving soil, whatever else the variances were. But the intangibles are obviously there. And first of all, I'd like to just thank everyone who spoke tonight. And the thing is, I think Lidl should look, consider two things. Number one, best case scenario for both Foutown and the pharmacy and the other restaurant is that we are able to finish out the lease. We know we probably will not be able to do anything past that in the state, in the current location. But best case scenario for us, best case scenario for Lake Hiawatha in general, with, would be if we would be able to finish the lease. Another thing is, the, in the previous virtual meeting, it was told that the the timeline for the demolition to building would be about 18, 22 months. And today it was supposed to be 12 months. So there's a little discrepancy there. But in any case, if it's 22 months, if it's 12 months, that's one year to almost two years of having no grocery store in the local heart of Lake Hiawatha in which seniors really depend on, on shopping there on a, on a daily basis, on a weekly basis where there's discounts given. ShopRite is a little bit out of the way. Yes, there is transportation to get there by, by the town. But in the long run, it is going to cause a lot of inconvenience and I understand demolition is not a small thing, it takes time. But along with that, with the petition being signed, circulating online, which has been signed by over 2,000 people, I think Lidl should maybe just take the time to reconsider their location, where they're opting to put this store because, yes, it's true, once Lidl's open, people will shop there. People who may have signed the petition will shop there. But still, I think it's very clear that, that the people of Lake Hiawatha, a majority of the people of Lake Hiawatha, I might be wrong in saying majority, but many people in Lake Hiawatha do not want a store like this that will have no, no, no fresh, no fresh meat, deli, pharmacy, no bakery, all these things that a person comes to on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, say hi to the employees, to, to kind of, you know, talk to the employees there, talk to the people in the store, not just shop and go home. It's really a family oriented business. The pharmacy is a family oriented business. People know you by your first name. It's, it's, it's a very unique experience, shopping experience, which I think Lidl, no matter what it does, is not going to get to that point. Obviously, I, as, as the pharmacy owner, will have to look at my options. And, you know, I'm at the mercy of whatever happens between the landlord and Foutown. But I think many people have voiced their opinion in regards to what they would like to see in that neighborhood and that would be a food town, a store that remains a family oriented, job producing, you know, bakery type store. Lidl, no matter how big the building is going to be, how nice it's going to look, how the product is going to be, I just don't see it becoming that. It changes the landscape of Lake Hiawatha. And I think in the long run, even though people will start shopping there, it does take away a lot of jobs. It does take away a lot of small businesses, three, three specific small businesses that have been in the heart of Lake Hiawatha for many, many years. Once again, sorry for the long comment, but once again, I, I'm thankful to everyone who spoke about me. I'm flattered and I hope Lidl can at least, at least, you know, understand that Lake Hiawatha is just not ready for Lidl yet. And if, you know, the best case scenario for us, right, would be that we're able to write out our lease. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Iran. And, you know, I'm not a customer of yours particularly, but I think it, all the people I spoke had such wonderful things to say about you. I really appreciate your contributions to the, to the community. And I hope Lidl will, will consider what you had to say and everybody else. So with that, I'm going to close the public portion. Do any members of the planning board have a comment that they would like to make before we consider any kind of motion tonight?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
I would like to propose and I would like to get a comment from our board attorney, Mr. Wenzel. Pardon my voice. Regarding whether I can make an alternate motion before we have a motion to approve. Would that be possible? Mr. Wenzel.
Since there's no, there's no motion, there would be no alternate motion, you'd be making the motion. So if you have a motion to make, Mr. Mealy, you should certainly make the motion subject to the chairman accepting the motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, Mr. Mealy, I think we still need to technically allow the applicant to close out their, their presentation tonight.
Very well, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Listen, I'll be, I'll be very brief. First off, I do want to thank, you know, all the board members and, and the professionals for all the time and consideration that have been given, all the comments that have been offered. I think a number of those comments did result in some improvements to the overall design. We, we are focusing on a piece of property about 2.9 acres in size, completely developed and utilized as a grocery store supermarket for a lot of years. And, and it is evident, you know, whether it's next year or two and a half to three years from now, this lease with Food Town is ending. We are proposing the development of a new modern grocery store on this location. I do understand and I appreciate all the comments from the public regarding the change. Change in ownership, change in, in the specifics on the nature, and I know change can be hard to accept. But a change is going to come, whether it's, whether it's a Lidl grocery store on this site or perhaps some other use, if that were to be the case. We have come up with a development design that greatly improves the existing site from a functionality standpoint. And by functionality, I'm talking about traffic, you know, ingress egress site circulation from the perspective of stormwater management. Going from a largely, you know, unregulated, you know, uncontained stormwater flow to an organized coordinated flow that includes DEP approvals to utilize that culvert that, that runs under our property. We are looking at significant enhancements to the landscaping that, that don't exist presently. You know, maintenance of buffers and things of that nature. We are going to continue to maintain that access to, to volunteer park to the benefit of, of not only Lidl but the community in general. Lidl very much, this is a, a significant investment that they will be making here in Parsippany. They very much want to be a part of this community. We wouldn't have gone down this road of entering into a contract and, and all the costs and expense that goes into, into design and the approval process. And I heard a lot of comments. I, I do understand that, that neighborhood grocery store, but, you know, I'm not sure why people should expect the employees at, at a new grocery store to be any different than the existing employees, just in terms of getting to know the, the local residents and the local customers that come and go. I can tell you, Mr. Sandelin stated it in, in his opening comments. Lidl is a responsible corporate, you know, a business. And they very much are community oriented. They do have a history of supporting local organizations in the towns where they, they exist. They've got a growing presence. Obviously, it's, it's a very large grocery operation, particularly, particularly in Europe, where it has its roots. But it is an operation that is really in its, in its younger phase of growing here in the United States and here in New Jersey. You know, as we stated at the outset, this will be one of its first store locations here in, in Morris County. And we are hopeful that the board will grant the approvals that are requested because they are very excited to, to be a part of the community and I appreciate, again, all the board's consideration on it and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wichitaala. And with that, I'll, Mr. Mealy, before we, we get to a motion, I would like to allow the other members of the board to have an opportunity to make any comments they would like.
Certainly.
Okay. So are there any members of the board that would like to provide a comment? Okay, well, Mr. Mealy, I'll, well, Mr. Mealy and the rest of the board, but specifically Mr. Mealy, I'll open it up for a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to postpone application number 20:524 for Little U.S. Operations until such time as the owner of the property and the operator of Foutown come to some agreement as to the extent of the lease. Do I hear a second, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Is there a second for that motion? Do we have a second for Mr. Mealy's motion? All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Mealy, we don't have a second for your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do any other members of the board wish to provide a motion?
Mr. Chairman, in application number 20:524, Lidl U.S. Operations, 435 North Beverick Road, Block 483, Lots 1. I move that we grant preliminary and final major site plan with the variances and all the, the different variances discussed subject to the items discussed and the working with the township professionals on making sure that the water drainage and other items that we discussed earlier are appropriately taken care of and that we move or suggest to the town council that they grant a major soil moving permit.
I'm going to just add a little to that, if I could, Mr. Dinsmore. Just, you're stating that you'd like all of the conditions that we discussed today and at the previous meeting to be included in the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Just, just for clarification, not to change your resolution.
No, just.
Or, yeah, not to change your motion. All right. Is there a second for Mr. Dinsmore?
Second, Mandel.
Okay, so we have a second from Mr. Mandel. Nora, would you please take a vote?
D. Piero.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Frigiri.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Mandel.
Mandel.
Yes.
Mealy.
No.
Von Aiken.
Yes. Yes. Okay, okay. Mr. Wichitaala.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mandel?
Yes, Mr. Mandel.
I'd like to, you know, again, thank the community for their comments and especially how they, they praised Raymond, I believe is pronounced. For his information, and I'm sure he knows, there are several vacant stores just north of his facility. So that he should not have problems relocating if and when he wants to.
I appreciate your comments there, Mr. Mandel. And hopefully, some of the services which perhaps are not being met by Lidl will, will find ways to be met in other ways. As you said, there's vacancies on North Beverick. Perhaps that will be an opportunity for somebody else.
And, and everyone, we would like to just say thank you very much again. We very much appreciate it and look forward to, to the future.
I'd like to make a.
Go ahead, Mr. D. Piero.
Well, first of all, maybe we could be on the ground with Lidl if they would consider putting the pharmacy in there. Maybe it'll be a first. But it certainly would be a feather in their cap if they want to make the residents in this area more acceptable to them. A small space in their property, it might be a first for Lidl, but it would certainly warm the community to them. So maybe that can be passed back to them. And my second comment is, John, I hope you feel better. Thank you, Mr. D. Piero. I appreciate it. And I'll certainly, well, Mr. Sandelins is still on the phone, we'll certainly convey that sentiment.
Very good. Yep, and John, I think, you know, the rest of us on the board also shared that your best wishes for your health and recovery.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we've completed our agenda for, for today.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mealy.
We have one item of business regarding the minor committee, if you would. I believe we were going to name members through the minor.
Okay, I did not have that on my agenda for today.
I had discussed it with Nora by email and I thought we were going to. I would like to continue on as a minor committee member. If that's available right now, so.
Mr. Chairman, we did not set.
I can't hear you, Mr. Dinsmore. You're muted. Okay.
Now I'm being unmuted.
You're shit with anybody had to say.
Yes, Nora and I had, had some back and forth on that and we did not apparently set it up at the organization meeting. And Nora then went and discussed this with the other minor, last year's minor subcommittee members and they all were very forthcoming and thought that it would be a good idea to maintain their positions on the minor subcommittee meeting committee. So I submit to you that those of us who were on the subcommittee last year are volunteering to remain on there, subject to your thoughts.
I have no objections. I, I, I had expected that we, we would have that conversation and, you know, the result that you've come to with the other members of the minor committee is, is entirely acceptable to me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mealy.
I would remind Tom Dinsmore, our vice chairman and our chairman of the minor, that Vince Aperewik is no longer a member, so you would have to fill that position.
So with that in mind, Mr. Dinsmore, I would think that it would be best that as, as it was done for me and some of the other members to choose from one of our newer members to join your committee, as it creates a good opportunity for learning.
Agreed completely. Our, our new, new committee members is Mr. Dadich and Ms. Jane.
And also Mr. Napolitano.
And Mr. Napolitano. The minor subplan, subcommittee is a very, a small portion of the overall board that considers plans that technically require our review that are relatively non-controversial usually. Occasionally, they turn out to be controversial. But they, they usually. Uh, but they, they usually, uh, consist of something very minor, something that does not really rise to the level of really being the question, but not it, it, uh, fits into our master plan or not. Uh, it just simply requires a review. Uh, and, uh, uh, we meet a half an hour before the regular meeting on the nights when there's a subcommittee item to go before us. Uh, we function exactly the same as the overall planning board, it's just that there are fewer of us. And, uh, the chairman is completely correct, it's a wonderful place to learn some of the uh, little bits about how the board works. Uh, so if of our, our three new members, if, if one of you wishes to volunteer to join us, uh, we would welcome you.
And we'll even saw a hand from Mr. Daish.
I'd be happy to help you.
That would be awesome.
Alright. Very good, and with Mr. Mealy and Mr. Dinsmore and, and Ms. Hernandez there also, I, I'm sorry, I forgot who your other member is, but um, you've got a really strong committee there.
Yes. Yes, we do. Alright, uh, I think the way we worked in the past, the chairman is simply able to appoint people to the subcommittee and we just move forward.
Uh, that's my understanding also, but I'll defer to our new attorney, Mr. Wenzel.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, I'll double check your bylaws, but normally, uh, this is the type of appointment that comes straight from the chair.
Alright, very good. Then as, uh, as, as presented by Mr. Dinsmore, um, we will utilize the e- existing committee, we'll carry over to the twenty twenty-one year. Um, uh, with the, uh, addition of, uh, Mr. Dadhish, Mr. Anil Dadhish, um, uh, who will be replacing, uh, Mr. Aparowick, who has stepped down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy, and Mr. Dinsmore, and all the other members of the minor committee.
Yes, Mr. Dinsmore as well.
Okay, uh, is there any other business from, from the members of the board that, uh, should be presented here tonight? Okay, well then I'll accept a motion to close the meeting.
Uh, before I make that motion, I just want to let all of the members know that, uh, Nora has informed me that there will be a minor site plan subcommittee meeting at our next meeting, which is the twenty-second, I believe. And, uh, she'll be getting us the material on it, uh, shortly, so we have a meeting at seven o'clock at our next meeting.
Alright, and, uh, what more thing, uh, sorry to cut you off, Mr. Dinsmore. Um, I think we, we, we did an excellent job with this application. Uh, many of your questions were, were, were very good and excellent. I appreciate the contributions from all of our new members, I think you're picking up quickly, and I'm excited for, uh, for this year. Go ahead, Mr. Dinsmore.
I move we adjourn.
Second, Dins.
Very good, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, alright, thank you everyone, have a great evening.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.